And to return to open session at approximately 6:30 PM.
Second.
All those, by roll call, all those in favor?
Move the high.
About I.
Round mic.
Point nine.
You're here.
I gotta get myself ready. Do we have?
I'm calling the Concord-Kalau Regional School Committee to order and note that we're being recorded. The Concord-Kalau School Committee will enter into executive session for purpose two under the open meeting law, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel and to return to open session at approximately 6:30.
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Oh, you're right.
Move the high.
I, store's I.
Round mic.
Point nine. Right.
Bye, guys.
Put it. In line. Yes.
And I'm calling the Concord-Kalau Regional School Committee back to order. Any public comments, Erin? Meeting of the minutes, have you had a chance to take a look?
Yes.
Yes.
I mean, I read them. I didn't see any corrections that needed to be done.
Thank you.
Yeah, very comprehensive.
Erin and I worked closely on them.
Yes, I would say so and so.
That's the way it looked.
Yeah.
So unless we have any changes, could I have a motion?
Motion to accept the minutes of December 11th, 2018 and December 18th, 2018.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And now we will have a recognition.
Yeah, Bee, you want to come on up? Uh, Bee C. or did Bela Coretta, did I say your name right? Close enough.
Everybody does that.
Really enjoyed the benefit of a CEF grant earlier this fall and her enthusiasm was so contagious the day I ran into her and the guests that she had brought in and the time they had with the kids that we thought it would be a great opportunity for her to come and tell you what that was all about.
Is this Martina Spada?
No.
That was Alex Benz.
That was early.
Yeah.
It's okay. This was a new, a different.
This is new.
Yeah, a brand new one. Sorry, okay. So tell us, tell us about it.
I will and thank you so much Superintendent Hunter, here on the school committee and most importantly Concord Ed Fund. This is the coldest day, so I wore this. I put my back to the camera, sorry camera. So and everyone, I was reading my alumni magazine in August and I saw a picture of a very, a baby, a graduate of 2010 who had published a new collection of short stories called, "How Are You Going to Save Yourself?" And every year I am lucky enough to teach a group of sophomores who are perhaps the most diverse in the building. I tend to have a lot of my students from Boston and this young man, Jeff Holmes, wrote short stories about living the life of double consciousness. He is biracial and he had a very elite education but grew up in the project south side of Providence, Rhode Island. And I thought, okay, I'll try it. And I want to tell you, I've never, I haven't read anything since I was 14 and I discovered Jane Austen that made me shake so much. You also, I hope Dr. Hunter has a little bell because I really could go on all the time. Sorry, 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 sorry. But I, I read this and I was just shaking and telling everybody about it and it's very adult. So what was I going to do? What was I going to do? I Googled him and I found his contact information and I wrote to him and I said, "Could you possibly come and talk to my sophomores? They're reading a gathering of old men and they're, they're thinking about double consciousness." And he wrote back the same day and said, "I, I'm going to be on the East Coast for two months." He was working on a screenplay. He's just so, you know, all that. And yes, I'll come. We shared a professor in common. Of course, I had her, her very first year teaching when she hadn't even gotten her PhD yet and we called her Miss Judy. He's like, oh, the story, whatever, whatever, you know. So anyway, he, I wrote to the Concord Ed Fund, I asked Alex Benz actually how to do this. I wrote to the Concord Ed Fund and my seniors read one of his short stories from his collection that was clean, clean enough. And it was unbelievable. He, I've never had this moment. I don't know if you guys were lucky enough to have this. My kids read a short story that made them angry and moved them and got them talking and the next day the writer showed up and they got to ask, like, why did you do this? Why did you make this guy do that? And the best thing they did was at the end of the class, he had them tweet out what they would say if they were some of the different characters in the story. I kept the tweets, like, I just, are you ringing your bell? It was the most, like, tense, marvelous, wonderful thing. The kids talked about it and I think even they understood it was special. I, my sophomores came, I did not tell my sophomores, I told my sophomores that he thought he was going to be a rapper and then he thought he was going to be a basketball player and he ended up being a writer. And my sophomores were like, psh, you know, they were so, I didn't tell them that he was, he is six foot seven. So he showed up and they were kind of like, hmm. You know, it was so great and he actually brought his screenplay and he had them act it out.
Oh, wow.
It was, okay, ring, ring, ring. Anyway, thank you Concord Ed Fund, thank you Superintendent Hunter. And it was so fun. I have pictures, you know, stop me anytime, tell me about it. So thank you.
Talk about bringing education to life. That's just fabulous.
I had maybe 30 seconds late that afternoon where Bee and the author were there together and I got a quick introduction and all of that was just exuding.
Do you have any questions? So sorry, I'm running to the next meeting. Sorry.
What's, what's the author's name?
His name is Jeff Holmes, J.M. Holmes, and his collection is called, "How Are You Going to Save Yourself?" It is not school appropriate, except there is a story that is.
Thanks for your caring, caring choice of the story.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Liaison reports are next. Any, anything to report?
Looking to meet, oh, because I always report something.
No, we had one.
Oh, yes, we did. I just thought, um, we could do that. We met with the president of CPAC and just had a really good dialogue about, you know, some of the, some of the questions that are coming up amongst special ed parents and how we can best communicate out.
Lovely me. They're very dedicated. They're so, they're amazing people.
It's great. So it was very good just to kind of keep lines of communication there open and hear some feedback and know, um, know that we, I think one of the interesting pieces of feedback that we got, at least that I took as personal feedback, was that sometimes when we're talking special ed, we all on the school committee tend to go right to budget and the numbers. And, and they want to know that we all see the child first. And I said, oh my gosh, well, of course, we all, you know, to us, it's like a given, of course, the child and the student and the well-being comes first and then we have to deal with the budget ones. But I think sometimes I jump right, I, I take that as a given and I jump right to the budget discussion. And it was nice to be reminded that I need to say that out loud too. That even though we assume sometimes we as a group, it's a given that the child.
I think that was good to hear.
So it was, it was good feedback to hear. But also just, but also some good feedback on, on all that we're doing in special ed and all that. So good discussion there. It was great.
I can report that the Adult Ed Program, as a result of some of the Can We Talk series that we've done, they're, we're now looking at doing three speakers over the next 12 months, probably starting in the spring, or in the fall, to just sort of have a theme for the year and let people come at different times. It's just gone really well and it's really fun to see this series develop, so.
I mean, I was an observer on that committee, you know.
Can you work?
And, and they brought forth some really good, well-attended speeches and speakers and so forth. And what's the theme like in the coming year?
Well, it's all, I, I, we haven't exactly decided on the theme yet, but, but it's always about trying to help people find ways to have conversation. So, you know, you, you want to make it general enough so that it's not political, but to answer some of the things that our political climate might be bringing up.
I can also report on the League of Women Voters Education Committee that I go two monthly and the last time I was there was the 11th, so I think since we've all met at least. And just that mostly the high-level report is that it's a great ongoing communication. Each time I'm there, I've been able to give a little bit of a status update on wherever we are, on budgets and all that kind of thing. Gave them an overview of all of the CPS level, but middle school discussions that we're having also. Had some great questions and really it's very helpful because that group is so knowledgeable and educated that the questions they ask are really good because it tells us the questions that we're going to need to answer going forward, whether it be on middle school stuff or the Warren articles for the high school or the budgets or all that kind of stuff. So I've been feeding that back to other people, but it's great input that we get there. And they're just a terrific partner in, in helping to look at education for kids in Concord overall. And also actually, I think it's since we all met regionally that they hosted the first Friday event. Were you going to talk about that anyway?
No, go ahead.
Because they hosted the first Friday event where Lori brought in a team of administrators. It was incredible, all the principals in special ed. They hosted a great event and it was all about the education, educating the whole child and talking about special ed, talking about wellness, talking about cultural proficiency. And it was just a terrific conversation about what's really important in education beyond just the academics.
Thank you for sharing that video.
Oh, okay. I got to, I got to, yeah.
I think I sent it to all of you after.
Yeah. It was, it was a great discussion event. So, anyway, that's all.
And that video is publicly available, if I'm correct.
Yeah, it's posted somewhere, yeah.
Somewhere.
Right, exactly. Exactly. So that's it, just really good discussions going over.
May I have anything else?
Policy? I don't have anything to report.
No, it's, yeah, okay.
I just mentioned that on Thursday I was invited to the finance committee meeting. Heather was there, Bob was there. And we went through all the, well, we didn't really go in depth, the budget articles, but the capital articles for both at the region and the middle school and the middle school feasibility study. And, you know, we did our best to answer questions and have an initial conversation around how we got to where we were and what we were thinking and what our approach was going to be, which hopefully we flush out more tonight. And so I think it was productive conversation.
It was great. You, you did a great job doing it.
Yeah, absolutely, definitely. So did Lori and I was very pleased to see Jared and Ian there, even though they didn't feel all that.
I know.
These guys rallied.
Totally rallied, really rallied.
And got a lot of things pulled together.
Do you want to mention the visit to the Karla fund call before, on that page? I don't know if you were, that was my cue, but you wanted to do that.
I was kind of, you know, the back, way back in my mind, it was there, but if you could.
No, you're the chair, go ahead.
No, I'd appreciate if you, was there any further discussion in the?
No, no, so we talked, same thing. We talked about the Warren articles.
Yep.
Got a lot of good questions.
Yep.
No, there was, the, the discussion afterward was about the Karla fund budget.
Yeah, okay.
No further discussion about the region.
Yeah, the only other thing I wanted to add is I looked at the school committee goals earlier today and we're not going to talk about them tonight, but maybe next week, next week, next meeting, we could have an agenda item on those. And so if you take a look at them, you know, it'll be four weeks from now, I don't know. We have a joint meeting two weeks from now, right?
February 12.
Okay, so two weeks from now. So if you look at them in the interim and if you have any, any comments about that, you know, let's, let's hear them and discuss them. So Superintendent Report is next.
Sure. Great, thank you. So relatives to special education, the middle school special education team met here on January 14th with a consultant. I joined them for the late part of the meeting. They've now really started to identify priorities out of the report as well as their own perceptions of what we need to be working on. And we're in the very, very early stages of action planning. We're also in the process of scheduling West Ed to come to the preschool over the next month or two. So we're looking for a report from them at the close of the year as well. And that will round out all of pre-K 12. Educator evaluation, I met with the CTA evaluation committee on the 9th. We met again in a week or so before, right before the break. We've made our way through most of the evaluation, evaluation language. I'll be doing the same with the CTA on a less formal basis most likely because it's one school and we can just do that at our monthly meeting. I'm also starting to work on making informatives for the evaluators as they are for the non-professional teachers. Student wellness, we're really focused on challenge success at both the middle and high schools. The high schools getting an extensive committee reconvened over the next few weeks to really look at where we are and where we want to be. So excited for that. This all loops into some of the events of December and January with student threats, making sure that we're piggybacking as much of student wellness as we can into that conversation as, as we do safety and security. So, school safety, we're holding our district safety meeting later this week. We're in the process of reviewing our practices. We've got a forum scheduled for next week so that we can have a community discussion January 30th at the high school. Really excited that it won't just be the local officials and administrators, but Marion Ryan, Middlesex District Attorney has agreed to come, as, as has a social worker who specializes in teenage and adolescent areas. So we're feeling like it's a pretty well-rounded group and it really is meant to just be that discussion that I think some families are hoping to have with us and have with each other and talk on how we support and care for our kids, both relative to their choices and safety of the schools. And, you know, from our seat, it's both the child who makes the threat and those impacted by the threat. Lots for us to talk about, share on what we can and explain why, what we can't and just be sure we're having a good community dialogue.
So is that an adults-only session?
It is intended for adults only, yeah, to have an adult conversation on where we're at. We are planning student-based things, most likely at an advisory session down the road. We're still not talking processes on that. We're going to talk a lot about the middle school tonight. That's where a lot of my time has been, both working on the, the planning committees at the, at the middle school that are up and running, whether it be the master scheduling committee, the configuration committee, facilities planning committee met last week for the first time. We'll talk about.
I didn't know that.
I know, so you did have one.
I figured, well, we're getting the CPS stuff later.
We can talk on that. We put together a pretty concise schedule to do all the visioning work that we are hoping to do to inform the discussion about the possibility of new middle school. This morning in this room, the educational consultant from Apple, the regional representative was here and boy, did he whet our appetites for what technology can do for us. So we're going to be looking at all the resources they offer. They offer a lot of PD. They offer a lot of educational leadership work. They offer a lot of what do you want, want to do with the technology? So it's part of your educational plan and not just a tool sitting in isolation. So I see that as some of the precursor work to that strategic objective one about innovation and engagement, authentic learning, project-based learning, all of that work that we're committed to doing over the next five years. This was a little taste of what that might be and trying to start gathering our resources and then talk on what, what we're aiming for, which is a discussion well beyond the leadership team, the, the staff and what we're, we're hoping to become down the road.
Is this K 12?
The Apple?
Apple?
Yes. They, they offer, as great, as much as they are about hardware and software, they are also very committed to their educational support to the school system. So I've had to benefit my previous districts to know what they offer and we just asked him this morning to give us a little taste of it. Of course, he has like the gadgets all through it, so really engaging, just like we're talking about being with the kids.
Toys.
Right, recording ourselves this morning. A lot of, a lot of fun. Cultural proficiency, this has certainly been a focus of the last month and for the upcoming month into February, Black History Month. I can't understate the impact of Principal Cofele's visit here last Monday and Tuesday. Really inspiring personal story of his dropping out of high school and then getting to college to play ball and then, then what, when, really the, the part of how that one book he ended up picking up mattered to him to say, there is more I should be doing and what do I want to be? And empowerment to him as an African-American youth and young adult. So the message was relationships, know your kids, put the time in. They're going to become who we believe they can become. I mean, it was just really, really amazing messages. Thanks to Andrew Namichi, our MECO director. He's planning a number of events. There's a couple this week with a screening of Selena as part of Martin Luther King Week. But in February, he's also planned to host a MECO documentary called, "On the Line: Where Sacrifice Begins." And I, just this afternoon, we were exchanging emails. He's got the maker of the movie coming. So, yeah, you know, we got a whole background here. Show, movie, or your story, whatever, the person who created it. So we're offering that opportunity for staff and doing some staff-based sessions and then a community session as well, really talking about the history of the program and the challenges and successes of the program. Just finally, community collaboration. We are, the Sustainability Committee that I co-latered is meeting for the first time next week with representatives both of the schools, the kids, the staff, and there's some, a number of community groups. And as you mentioned, we, you know, had a few meetings last week with the finance committees and I think we're really productive in opening the dialogue, especially about the Warren articles since our budgets are close to, close to settled. Not totally CPS, but close. Right, yeah.
So I just had a question on the Sustainability Committee. And you obviously don't write up a charge for that kind of committee, right? What do you?
Well, the first meeting really will be about what are we going to be? I've had a few suggestions come in as I put invitations out once to the goals and the, the town's goals in terms of long-term impact on the environment. I think we have some priorities, parking being probably the top, to talk on their thoughts and feedback on parking and energies there and how we might address the long-term way we get ourselves to and from school. And then I really want to solicit from the group what other ideas there are. I also hope this group will be a place that I can bring, I get, I get ideas brought to me all the time. So I want to be sure that there's a place to bring those ideas and screen them and talk about them because it would be very easy to get off in too many directions all at once and not have a core spoke to that. So that's one of my other main goals. But I, I think there's a lot of potential here, so.
This is an advisory committee to you.
Correct. And while he's agreed to sit in as school committee member. You know, I think just to have the folks with that priority all in the room together on a number of different, different occasions throughout the year will give us a lot of benefit, both in terms of where we are, where we could go. One of my goals is to just inventory what we're already doing in terms of sustainability. We have at least a couple of really state-of-the-art schools, just in terms of how they operate and the energy, energy efficiencies they have. But there's also composting going on. You know, we can, it'd be great to just inventory it on, get, get a big picture view of what we are doing and then decide where we want to go.
So it sounds like the challenge will be to kind of focus on a few items because if you focus on everything, you're probably not going to be able to get anything done, right? So are there particular?
I, you know, I think.
Items now that?
Parking is by far the, the top priority, just so that we get that conversation and some planning going on how we might address different aspects of sustainability and parking. You know me, I love a good plan. So I really like to see this group come together, the baseline inventory get made and then what the vision is for the district. And I think the goals were a great idea to have a little, some more measurable pieces to that potentially and then craft out what areas we're going to, going to look at over the coming years. This group will have more control over some areas, things that are really about behavioral. And I know I mentioned at the Concord Finance, we had a great discussion when I was with Kate Hanley and I grew up she had come, come pull together this past fall. You know, there's, there's a big behavioral human aspect to getting from the ideal sustainable goal to, okay, I actually have to change what I'm doing and it impacts me personally. So I'm really interested in having that conversation because it's great to preach the ideal, but then if you're not willing to do differently. So, yeah. So Kate will be there as well.
Can I recommend a teacher?
Go ahead.
Kaliusha Yosha from the Teacher's Apes at the high school.
Oh, great, okay.
Has, excuse me, has made a tremendous impact on students.
Excellent.
And how they leave her class and make their own toothpaste and shame their parents for, for buying. No, you talk about life-changing.
Yeah. Oh, excellent.
That's great.
I have a few teachers volunteer, but will we?
Don't tell.
Don't tell anyone that Mary said that.
There are a lot of kids that have gone to that class and it's made an impact. They're creative. So I, I'm sorry, this says district Y, and you have students. Is it, is it just high school students?
Yeah, so for now, to get started, I engage, Peter Nichols is going to be on the committee and he leads the green team at the high school. So we're starting there. We're, he's inviting the green team members to come. I'd love to talk with them more about who else and how else we get other kids involved. Thanks.
Yeah.
Also on that, correspondence, I didn't see any, any late correspondence come in? No, I don't think. Okay, reports for discussion are next. No business.
Great. So it's January, so this is usually when I bring you an update on the goals that I set back in the early part of the fall for this year. It's always a great self-reflexive process for me to document some, some of the work and realize where I'm on track and where I want to fine-tune or need to give more time and attention to certain things that we had said were priorities. So really what I've tried to do here is list some items that really represent evidence of the work that's happened in, in the particular goal area, under each of those goals. So you can see they're either very concrete or they're a little broader based. And then this becomes informative as we make plans for the remaining part of the year to look at what's on track or even occasionally ahead of schedule and what hasn't had the time brought to it, either by design or, you know, my biggest goal is to always make sure that something that I'm just not getting to gets re-prioritized at the halfway mark of the year. So nothing slips through that we had really said was going to be a purposeful plan. I can talk you through a few highlights. I won't be giving it all, talk you through. So under school of student achievement goals, the goal had been to close, let me say the objective. The goal really is based on research-based intervention and findings of the special education review students receive support targeted to their needs as identified through data. So the objective is to close performance gaps and provide effective intervention in special education settings. So the work we've really focused on, as you are very aware, is the special, the West Ed reports through special ed, as well as creating programming, programs for kids to keep opportunities within the districts available to them. So we are still very actively engaged in that. We have 11 students in three new intensive programs, K 8 right now. We're always re-looking at the high school program. We're always re-looking at the high school programs and through that restructure, have different opportunities than what we have. MCAS, we've spent some time this fall looking at MCAS and the performance of our subgroups, that's still an area to focus on. And it completely dovetails into this, the WestEd reports and topics of research-based interventions and make sure kids are getting support targeted to the gaps that they have, as well as the eligibility conversation and RTI being really extensively laid out throughout those reports and continuing to build off the foundations of response to intervention that we, we have in place so far, especially at the secondary schools, which are just a bigger challenge to build. So, those are all moving along. I would say the special education part has had the priority while we build the RTI at the secondary schools and then really looking at our data, our data work. We had set a goal also to look at the evaluation system and my personal objective was to foster a growth mindset through strong partnerships with the evaluators and the teachers. The leadership team has spent some meetings talking about process and procedure, we're going to continue that. I would love to spend more time looking at our way of managing change for, for change's sake and talk on how we're trying to really bring that growth mindset to teachers. I think I've had some really insightful conversations with both the CTA Evaluation Committee, as well as the high school leadership team, and there's some, there's some cultural pieces that are a piece of this. That was a surprise, I did not think that was part of this goal. I thought this goal was process and providing really helpful, constructive feedback to teachers and just getting in that mode of like, we're, we're doing really, really well, how do we just keep growing and doing better? And it's turned into a culture conversation, so a very important culture conversation because I think until you have that, all that other thing I was talking about can't happen. So, really productive. So, more work to be done there, a little different, a different plan than I initially had. Important to take care of that first order of business.
And thank for adjusting it as needed. It's like you said, without that, the rest of it can't be-
Well, and I think too, just grateful that the feedback was so honest and authentic that we could respond to it because if the teachers hadn't been willing to say some of those hard things and I'm sitting there talking process and deadlines and we would have been missing each other.
Disconnect, yeah.
So, really, really good.
That's great.
Under District Improvement Goals, we had said we look to create a learning environment that supports the wellness of students. And through that, we've been looking at mindfulness, technology usage, and our way of managing stress and things like that. So, I would say we haven't done that much with the technology yet. This, this review now has reminded us that we get to put that on the list. We've had some attempts at it, some starts at it, but in terms of a real structure and the goal we had, we haven't, we haven't really set the foundation for that yet. But in terms of student wellness, that we have spent an awful lot of time on that this, this fall, I think the presentation to the league was really helpful to capture that with our K-12 mindfulness work and the support the Education Fund offered us on that. We've been looking at the data, the YRBS data for this year and, you know, making sure that we're building kids and their capacities and, again, culture, but in a different way, that this is a culture where we believe in slowing down and taking the time to be mindful and thinking through what we want our kids to experience, not just as a means to an end, but enjoying the means along the way. So, there's a lot of work to be done there, there's no one, we talked a lot about this during the student situations last month, and there's no one answer. It's such a layered onion of how we got to where we are, but we got to keep peeling back and keeping what we have control of. Homework will always be an ongoing conversation about this, so that's also especially work happening at the middle of high schools to talk about homework. Safety, this, this I say out loud, I had built this, I had built this goal back because I realized over the summer that our emergency documents needed to be reviewed and just fresh. I thought that's what this goal was, and this first half of the year, it has been so much more than that. The Safety Committee getting together and talking on a number of different procedural pieces, looking at apps that are available to us, realizing the communication needs we had, that we feel, felt like we were in a good place for communication, then realizing some of those options, especially with cell service being so challenging, looking at the apps that are out there that we're still in the process of vetting and hoping to purchase so that we have many more options and allow for interconnectivity with police. So, I've learned a lot about what's even available in 2018 and 19, well beyond what it used to be. So, so that said, we're still trying to figure out how to get walkie-talkies so that in the meantime, we can just talk with each other and talk to each other. So, I think there's huge range of options that you want working as many different ways as possible, so we're still trying to meet all those.
You mean walkie-talkies with huge range?
Yeah, we love, we've been working on walkie-talkies that allows connectivity within the schools, between schools, and with police and fire. Again, another piece, the cell service piece is a portion of that, but we also had a couple of, you know, Crisis at Willard for one, and you've got a principal on the field in crisis who wants to just be able to turn the frequency against all these different people that he needs, including transportation and on and on, because in crisis, that's, you need to be able to talk to the bus, the bus depot, you need to be able to talk to the fire and police, they need to be able to get to us and they need to be able to get to each other and, and within the school. So, I think we're doing a better job of identifying the needs, as I said, we've solved them all yet, we're identifying these and options for how to meet those needs. We have looked at the plan, the original document that we needed to update, so we're in the throes of getting that tweaked and up to speed. Just going through it helps us feel better that we have a lot in place. It's the communication out of the plan that's going to be really critical as we get that, that draft finished. And then, you know, just being so close to some of our kids in need over the last month, it brought a whole new layer to this discussion and trying to help make sure that the community feels safe in the schools. That's been a lot of personal, individual time for Mike, Miss Dulo and I the last month, listening to those needs and concerns and helping to know, get a better feel for how we can meet those needs and how and what we communicate, which comes with its own challenges, especially when there's individual kids involved. And then the needs of the kids and making sure that we're knowing who, who our kids are and what they need. And then finally, this Second School Resource Officer, which I can't say enough about, and twofold really, the duplicity of this has been the benefits of the middle school, amazing, you know, to have someone on site there, immersing himself in the culture, getting to know, speaking of getting to know the kids. Lots of positive experience for our middle school kids, plus he's there when things happen. But then also to free up Officer Scott so that he can be dedicated to the high school has been the, the double fold that we really probably could have underestimated and it truth of two have proven to be incredibly valuable. So, way beyond our vision and think of what that, those two roles could be, we're starting to see them turn into different things.
Can I share a quick comment?
Of course.
I'm the School Resource Officer at the middle school, because I have two kids in middle school, different buildings, of course, it was friends of them. I literally, over the past couple of weeks, overheard a couple of different conversations between their friends, in which I zipped my lip and didn't say anything. And it was all about, oh, yeah, do you know Officer Kevin? Oh, yeah, I know Officer Kevin. Oh, yeah, he hangs out with me at lunch. And all going through all this conversation about how everybody loves Officer Kevin.
Celebrity officer.
Yes, but it was the coolest conversation to hear because these kids were just so happy about being friends with Officer Kevin. And I just sat there thinking, what an amazing connection to make. And like you said, then when he's needed for something, he has this relationship of trust with these kids already. I mean, I was blown away here, and it was two different times, different groups of kids, but it just really, so he spoke to me about the value of having him there on-site regularly, having lunch with the kids. I mean, what, just incredible value that I could see, even just overhearing kids talking about it. So, I just had to share that, it was really fun.
Individual student level and just in terms of a presence in a positive way.
Yeah.
You know, we had some significant challenges last year at one building in particular, and it's just a calmer place and he's a piece of that, there's just enough. I'm not going to spend too much time on the budget goal and the facilities goal because that's the work you have in brings with me, but we've obviously zero-based both budgets and are still reconfiguring and reallocating and all that work that, where the opportunities are there. You weren't going to want copiers now and cell phones and, well, this just goes on.
All the fun stuff.
Yeah. You know, looking at the professional practice goals, this is the one that I intentionally had said I would really get started on from January on through the rest of the year. Of course, when I wrote this, I didn't know Kristen would not be here to do it with me until February. That work has worked out very well. So, she and I have had a couple of phone calls about, this year really is meant to be a year of looking at what we think we might need to do to start to build this vision of innovation and engagement. And some of what I hope to do is build out the resources we have, Rivers, Rivers being one, the steam lab was being another, just those are like such pure clinical opportunities. So, how do we take some of that work and what could pieces of that or the influence of that turn into a more traditional environment? While we all figure out what we need to learn, we don't, we know there's going to be some professional development required, and so we're continuing to talk about that. So, today really was the kickoff this morning with Apple visiting and then we'll be building from there over the course of the year. Cultural proficiency, I think this might be one of the ones I'm proudest of with the work we've done this, this year to date. It really has become an ongoing conversation in many, many different facets of how we're thinking. So, whether it's the keynote speakers or providing a calendar to the staff or the amazing work Andrew Nemeche's already doing with the plans and projects he's proposing, so much because he hears us saying this is the important topic for us this year and he just keeps bringing ideas that are just all very well-received. So, then each building's doing its own work and how they're talking about it, whether it's an Equity Walk at Alcott or an Identity Discussion at Willard, Andrew's got a roadshow too that he's taking on. So, really great things, which are, you know, you know it's starting to build culture when one thing leads to another because someone who was engaged in the first piece says, oh, I'd really like to try that, and it blossoms from there. So, that's early signs of that, which is really exciting. And then we're about to really take on the recruitment and hiring of more candidates of diverse backgrounds. The leadership team has been talking about hosting our own job fair here, maybe collaboration with another local district and trying to get ahead of the bigger job fair in March.
Ooh.
So, hopefully we can get some momentum going there.
That's great.
The goal is working mics for next year.
Thank you, Lori.
I know. We will put that up, because we do this constantly. And then my last one is the community connections and trying to be focused in continuing to build relationships outside of the school community, not, of course, that doesn't mean I'm not doing it within, but reaching out and about. We, you know, one of the goals I had set here was building stronger connections with Carlisle Town Officials and Leadership, and we've been to three FinComs, FinCom meetings, two Board of Selectmen meetings, I had coffee with the chairs of the select board. I think we're starting to build, build that communication, so really glad for that. Concord Climate Action Network, we've reestablished a partnership with them, so we're going to be formally listed as one of their participating groups, and we're talking with them on a speaker series and have offered space and help with publicity. I was able to go back to the Rotary Club and present to them, we had that great League of Women Voter Forum. Your email list is up and running, I haven't checked the subscriber number in a little while, but we will do that, it was in the hundreds last time, so making sure we keep that going and just really benefiting from all the connections and collaborations both communities offer us, so. It's been great, good start.
It's great.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Just this alone is such a great self-reflection, I appreciate that you asked.
Lori, can we come back to just one thing, just for my clarity?
Sure.
Page two.
Yes.
Where you, let's see if I can find it here, referring to achievement gaps and academic supports, your notes, review of specially-designed instruction, is that RTI specific?
It's actually both RTI and special education, so what we're aware of at this point, we have a lot of data that tells us what kids are strong at and their areas of need, and we have a lot of resources of different programs and ways to address the needs, and we need to tighten up the relationship between the two. We're finding that the plethora of resources means that different schools are, might be using different things or teachers are using things based on their previous experience, and we just want to, the middle school, for example, is starting to inventory those things, like, let's get it all in one place and start to see what we're using and how we would best use it. And then the data's just really critical so that you're matching the right tool with the right, with the need. And I think consistently, we're wanting to be sure that we're using those specially-designed research-based opportunities with kids to address exactly what that skillset is that they're needing. So, it's both regular ed and special ed, I would say.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
It's great, it's a lot of work to see an overview of all, I mean, I look at that and think, wow, that's all over the past three months.
You know, and it's so important, I say, this is not work I do by myself in any way, shape, or form, it's from the, you know, leadership here and the principal not down. Ultimately, it's the teacher work that matters the most, so we're glad for their engagement.
Thank you. Joe?
So, in your packets, you see some budget transfers as well as the quarterly variance report. So, the transfers that I'm requesting is $572,452. And it's pretty much, it's the standard format that I think you've seen at least two or three other times now. And then the variance report is, again, the quarterly variance report, and that is by the 1,000, the 100 function. So, to date, we're in budget. Sorry, I thought I had it pulled up. Yes. So, we're in budget. Special leg down at the bottom, you'll see, is still highly in the negative. The reason for that is we have yet to reclassify that money to circuit breaker, so we're going to be doing that for the next variance report. You'll have that probably in the February monthly variance report. There are some other things that we reclassify to revolving accounts, to grants, that have, that have not 100% been done yet, and there's more on the, on the high school budget than there is on the CPS. I'm, Ian is well-versed in all of this, I'm still learning all the accounts and what can be transferred over. But this is a pretty good snapshot of, you know, where we are, we've encumbered everything that we think we can encumber right now, and I think we're in pretty good shape going into the winter.
Any questions?
No. Great, thanks for keeping this all clear for us.
Is there any line item that you're more watchful for than others in terms of what's problematic potentially?
It's always looking at tuitions, you know, tuition lines. Other than that, no, I have, I've done like my, my first round of run rates, so what I do is I try and run a report once every week or two, and then I'll compare the available balance to the previous report, and if it's a salary, then I do an investigation to figure out why, what's going on. It can be very simple, if somebody coming back from a leave, it could be, you know, many things. So, right now, no, just the regulars, I'll be keeping a close eye on utilities, I'll be keeping a close eye on, obviously, snow removal, I know that's a bad word. So, no, I think we're in really good shape for where we are and what I know right now.
We won't touch feet.
That's great. Yeah, right. Don't say that again.
Thank you.
Moving on to old business, Virtual School Days proposal.
Yeah.
Talking about-
I know, he led me in nicely.
Perfect.
Right. So, tonight I'm hoping to get your approval on the conceptual piece of this, and I'll talk on elements. It hasn't changed a lot since I brought it to you last time. What we've been doing, the work behind the scenes has been trying to really identify the specifics of the tools and activities we would use with both kids and staff. So, we are sticking with the essential components being that staff would be on a paid working day, given that they support those collection of student work and they participate in professional development. Kristen's office has been doing this amazing job of gathering resources for the professional development with a theme in cultural competency, combination of videos and readings. It was important to us to have some things we could print and do hard copy of because some of the staff members may or may not have as easy access to technology since we're being inclusive of bus drivers and cafeteria, and we don't provide them all the laptops, and we want to be sure that we're not making assumptions on that. The deadline for the completion of the professional development would be one week from the day of the school cancellation. Staff not completing work would be- Staff not completing work would be considered absent and charged to sick day. Similarly, the kids, we are creating common grade levels, grade level assignments created by the staff, also due a week from the day of the cancellation. And hopefully you got a chance that I screenshot a few of the options that are, have been pulled together. So there's a choice board in draft form for every elementary grade level. So they would choose five activities off the board, which are very balanced between online and non-technical options. So kids are not just sitting at screens all day. Middle school is going, we went on a digital literacy and research-based theme for the middle and high schools because some of our curricular needs are to find places that we're not doing as much of that as we would like to be. So the, our really gifted librarian staff said, "Oh, we have an idea because we have things we aren't getting to that we're wishing we could get to every student." So the middle school took on a theme of internet searches and has some, have some really engaging learning activities for kids at each grade level. And the high school's taken on the same research idea, only a little deeper dive, which would include Google Scholar and some of their research scholarly databases and such like that.
So, because I looked at, this is just, just kind of a sample. I looked at this and I just didn't understand what the high school kids were doing.
So there's activities associated with each, almost webquest-like where the kids have to maneuver their way through. And then there's a short assessment that they also have to complete. I can send you the links to some of this if you really want a deeper dive into what the kids will be doing.
Okay.
Yeah. And then, so teachers would ensure the collection of the work. The recommendation and all of this is pending MOAs with the unions that the high school staff could collect, oh, this has a technical. Yeah, high school staff or the elementary school. The elementary school staff would do it within the classroom, home base at the middle school, and through the advisory at the high school. Students would also be considered absent if they don't complete the work.
So is that, maybe is, are they absent for the day? Like, this is one, so they're not absent, okay.
Yeah. Yeah. So I just want to, you know, we're going to be very transparent that the goal of the Virtual School Day is not to replicate a day's worth of work for staff or kids. The goal is to comply with the required days you meet and make sure that we can try to minimize the makeup days in June. All the district things I've reviewed that are blizzard bags or whatever, whatever they can call. Same mindset, which I think is part of why the recommendation in the next point is that we would, on the third and sixth day, use the Virtual School Day, not as a complete replacement for everything. One, because there's definitely a desire for a regular snow day. And right about now, I'm getting so mistreated everywhere I go. And I just, I just look at them and I go, "I don't understand the rush." "You don't understand the relief this has been so far." But anyway. And then the sixth day, really, because, but then, that means we could also contain it to no more than a week's worth of makeup days. And just avoiding that last week in June is such a huge priority.
So if, if you get to, let's say, March and we haven't had, like, might you put on the second day just to test this?
I guess we might.
I would ask the same question.
I'm afraid to ask that.
I know.
Lori, just tell them anyway.
I know, right.
Just cancel school one day. Give everybody a decided free day.
Pretty funny, the way, the way I'm getting so mistreated. I was in the middle school today and definitely would like a snow day. I'm like, well, how's the snow? Honestly. And this would be our pilot year. We would definitely step back at the end of the year and review with everyone involved and decide what worked and what didn't, and how we want to operate going forward. Next steps pending your approval tonight, we do have to submit the plan to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, just so they have it. We do need MOAs with all of the labor associations involved, which would include, I have four that I drafted right now, CTA, CCTA, the bus drivers, and the high school tutors. I would need to determine, to Mary's point, the third and sixth day and whether those are the right dates to do it. Right now, that's the goal, that may need discussion as we go. And then a debrief at the end of the year. So it feels like it's coming together. It's been a lot of work by a lot of people. So it's great to see we've got some tangible products to look at. And I'll be sharing those with the unions as we meet and make sure we've communicated relatively clearly what we're thinking.
Lori, to that point, the next steps, is that order of sort of the timeline? For example, you submit to DESI before.
DESI is just a collection, they're collecting plans, they're not actually approving them.
They approve them. Okay, so you just submit.
Yeah.
But the real work is ensuring that all the labor associations are.
Yeah. And then even the ones that aren't, you know, we met today on the cafeteria to try to make sure they're aware of what we're thinking. Just to make sure that this is inclusive of all of our staff, that became a priority for us. And I have to say, staff advocating for other staff to make sure there wasn't a loss of pay for some of our folks was just really a great cultural piece of this discussion. Caretaker for each other, so. Communication is the biggest next step while we agree on the actual details of the plan.
So is there like a plan that gets posted on our website so that every family can go see it?
Yes.
And I'm just curious, what gets submitted to DESI? Do they care that much about professional development and all the things we do with our staff? They care like the students do, or?
Yeah.
Kind of your second half of your [inaudible]. I'm just curious.
So yes, we have draft posting, you know, activities ready to go that will need a little bit of description. And clearly, we need communication out with the families to help everyone. I had a very long, I had a conversation in a middle school classroom this afternoon that they were saying they didn't want to do this because it was really hard to sit all day at your computer. And then eventually, that wasn't the case. The tide turns, so. Definitely have some work to do on that. I have purposely not done that until we've all come to an agreement and we have a solid plan that we feel ready, ready for prime time.
Just in case.
Just in case.
Well, so you need to better be able to answer the questions.
Correct. It has taken a lot to get to where we are.
Lori, you should train some students in each grade to go and teach it to the rest of the.
Yeah. Yeah, do some home, home support there.
Right.
That's great.
I have a quick question. You know, I've been behind this concept from the beginning. I love it, and I love seeing how it's coming together. I have heard a couple people questioning, and I wanted to kind of share some of those questions with you to those who say, "Well, hold on a second. Are you trying to say that, you know, doing a couple projects is as valuable as a day during the year in the school?"
Definitely not.
And, okay, and my response is, "No." But the day at the end of June isn't necessarily as valuable either. But I would love to hear your answer to that question because it's probably better than mine.
Sure. You know, honestly, the state's given us a lot of flexibility here, so we can approach this from different, different ways. They have not been looking for, or even in the days when they were approving the plan, there was meant to be flexibility here so that it really was multiple goal setting. And the academics are in it, but it's just as much about being able to be sure you knew when you were getting to June and not being so handcuffed by the schedule over the course of the wintertime. You know, it, it originally started as a piggyback to the conversation of the 180-day requirement and whether that was realistic in this day and age of these monster storms and power outages and all of that. So there's purposeful flexibility there, I believe. It's much easier for the state to allow this kind of plan than it is to change the law.
From 180 days.
So there is an intent here to be flexible and minimize the really, really challenging, you know, couple of years we've had with districts and school till well into June, trying to figure out how to manage that. So, so that's the answer. That's the, you know, pretty straight-on answer. We don't think this is the same. We're not trying to pitch it as the same. That said, the balance, that said, the balance is content coverage, especially for some of our secondary kids, is incredibly important and on the minds of our teachers. So our compromise to that was to say, let's not say every day is going to be a virtual day, but try to find a medium there, which is why it's balanced at three and six and not front later, more virtual days than makeup days, so.
Great, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. It's complex, for sure.
Yeah, I think that the high schools have the hardest.
No question.
Time because they need the days really to cover the material that in many cases, well, APs are usually done by then, but subject test or whatever, that, maybe that time. But I have heard of a couple districts that just do virtual snow days.
Yeah, there are a couple. Wadefield, Wadefield came out of the game running a year and a half ago and hasn't had a makeup day since, so. Everybody's got a little different spin. We're certainly not the only ones having this conversation.
And you may get there.
I don't know. That's why you want to try.
They may want to, they may not.
Yeah. See a feel on it and the logistics of it. I mean, some of the backdoor logistics here, you know, Kristen's office has created a list of every employee in the district and making sure that they get the PD responses back.
Right.
So, you know, just the structural side has had to be a whole other discussion.
So, a quick question in regard to students. The expectation is this is rather independent, rather home-based, and they have a week.
Right.
Does that imply that there'd be school supports for the student who could use those school supports to achieve these expectations?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, the gift of the common project here is that it's really clear what the kids are trying to accomplish. So I'm sure there's opportunities here for whether it's special educators or other support staff to be able to check in and ensure kids are doing, because we know, this was your recommendation that actually became so enlightening. We know what every child's doing without having to track down all these different assignments because everybody's got the same task. Much easier to support, much easier to manage, so.
So is the superintendents association, are they keeping track of any of these programs? Is it a subject that's discussed at some of their meetings?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Round tables and other spots where we all get together. Everybody's got, a lot of our districts in this area started to talk. Some are farther along, the Carlyles moving along. Yeah. Yeah. So all of us have had the same need of calling schools between five and 10 times last year just by trying to figure out how to adjust.
All right. Thanks for all the work that's gone in.
No, I'm grateful. I mean, this has been a really big team effort, so, thank you.
Kind of relatively quickly.
I guess I'm struggling with, you want us, we're supposed to approve a plan. But this is sort of an outline of the plan, which I'm fine with. But is there, like, is, what are we missing that we're supposed to be approving?
This is, I can bring you all the way down to the student activities and the resources for the professional development. I think that's the only missing piece that you don't have. I can send those to you so you can look at the solid drafts that are in place. I think that's, if you want to see that before you approve it, we can certainly get that to you.
Wouldn't that be, I mean, I'm just, I know I'm the OCD one about this stuff, but if we're ruling a plan, we should be a plan, right? Full plan.
Yeah, I mean, they're not primetime ready, so I'm going to have to send those to you all and not throw them on the webpage quicker, so.
But in order to, so my hesitation is if we have a snow day, like, we want to be this.
Yeah. I say that to, you know, I think if, if there's things we need to change, I would probably need that feedback from you as individuals over the next day or two because I'm, I do have meetings both with the unions trying to get to the next place, knowing the weather's moving along. But I can definitely share.
So what we're, it's, okay, I think what we're missing is not, to your point, it's not significant for us. We probably wouldn't have feedback and it's not significant.
Okay. But I'm happy to share. I just, one issue is I couldn't put it on the webpage, which is why you have screenshots. Because we aren't quite.
I thought this was the plan, which.
It really, there's no structure from the state in terms of what the plan includes. So it's what we all agree.
So it's what they're going to tell you that you got wrong.
I'm not sure they are in this case. I'm not sure they are.
Nobody's assigned to that yet.
They were, they, they had people assigned. They were actively approving plans two years ago. And then they decided that wasn't how they were going to do it, so.
Good decision.
Lori, just pointing clarification on the January 21 memo, item number one. Virtual school days are the equivalent of a day for all staff and participation in one hour of PD. Is that correct?
We don't expect the staff to be sitting and doing a six-hour project any more than we expect the kids to be doing a six-hour project. The staff will have other responsibilities in terms of the work coming into them upon the week later and the management of that work. So we see that as another task.
So theirs is a hybrid of one hour PD and all the student support work necessary for the students to have a day's credit.
Correct.
And the, the non-teaching personnel who are included? You mentioned the transportation unit.
Yes.
That would be PD of a varying nature.
Both of them will be PD, they, their hours are different, so, and their responsibilities are different. So we felt that.
Would be based on their needs on a given day and what curriculum was available to them?
We would provide them a list of resources and then they could let us know if they need, what they need in order to be able to accomplish it.
Thank you.
Next item is the TV studio use agreement.
I'm going to hand you new copies. So this afternoon, we spent some time, we had a few comments come back individually over the last. Let me take theirs. So we, we're still tweaking, but I think we're really close. I had held this pending the completion. Let me back up and just give context so we all know what we're talking about. This is the agreement between the Town of Concord and the region in terms of use of the TV studio space, which is now Minuteman Network.
Yeah.
Minuteman Media Network.
Thank you. Minuteman Media Network. So the goal when we originally began this conversation was back in the fall before the transition had fully happened and the Town of Concord was running the studio. And there had not been in place an agreement between the Town of Concord and the Town of Carlyle as to access to the studio and the conditions around that access. So after a number of our conversations, we put it on hold while we allowed that to get worked out. So that indeed has been, been worked out. So there's an agreement between the two towns. So now we'd like to revisit this and see where we're at. So I have some edits here that I can talk you through from the one that was posted online. And then see if there's any other major topics you want to still, still consider. So, shall I just walk you through them?
Yeah.
Everything in yellow means it was either deleted if it has aligned through it, or it was added, or there's something I need to talk on there to be sure that it all comes together. So it will be through the highlights that we're going to talk. The agreement that's proposed here is for 25 years. I'm just going to remind you that we got to the 25 years, and this can be up for discussion or not at the will of the committee. The 25 years is because we had initially in the document said in perpetuity. And the lawyers made it clear to us that that wasn't a legal, probably smart arrangement. So the 25 years is the maximum allowable by law, and that's what we had substituted in for the perpetuity. It can get top-down if you want to revisit the 25, but that's what's been in there since, I think, October or so.
So I question this because the agreement between the two towns is for a year at a time. So shouldn't these sync up?
I will leave that to you. I think, I think we went into this with the intention that it would likely be the case that it would be a long-term relationship as we had had with CCTV, where we've been committed to that partnership and in fact, had built with a purpose for that, and that that intention wouldn't change necessarily.
And yeah, I think that the purpose is for the, all students to have access to the facility when they're here. So I think whatever agreement I would hope Carlyle and Concord would make for the studio information would be reflected here. And I think it is, yeah.
If the one year and the 25 years are quite different as they are, then we look at item three, I think, Mary, to say, does that have enough teeth in it? The expectation that the intermunicipal agreement remains in place. And is this argument then predicated on that other intermunicipal agreement?
I'm not able to. No, it's a good question. I don't know the answer.
I would say right now it's not. This is an agreement with the Town of Concord, who's running the TV studio. If you read the agreement with the Town of Carlyle, they're. If you read the agreement with the Town of Carlisle, they're, they're in agreement that Concord's going to manage and run the studio and they're going to pay on a user basis for what they have access to. So, and they agreed to hours and costs and all of that. So I, I think the approach there does fit here because this is about making sure Concord has access to the studio so it can fulfill its commitment to Carlisle, is how I would read it.
And I would read it, we're granting it "in consideration," quote unquote, of many things, including the continuation of the intermunicipal agreement with Carlisle. So, were that to be voided, we're back at the table in this agreement, which I would hope protects Carlisle and, of course, then every student in high school.
And yet if they make minor changes to that, let's say next year they're renewing and they make some changes to the rates or hours or whatever, maybe that doesn't affect this, right? So I would think that we're fine with a longer window. Based on that, I'm saying.
I, I agree with that. The question is how long?
I mean, my question would be, are you comfortable with that term of commitment in terms of what you're committing the school to?
Oh, most definitely, given the long term. And then there's, there is language here to bring up the discussion of the use of a studio if there's other needs that come up. So that's another reason I think I'm comfortable. Alright. We made sure to attach the floor plan, so that's in your packet. You can see the highlighted areas, the TV studio space itself. So we're just making sure the exhibits are here. In number three, we've changed any reference to the agreement between the towns to actually reflect the title of the document that they've agreed to, the intermunicipal agreement by, between the Town of Concord, Massachusetts and the Town of Carlisle, Massachusetts regarding access programming and management. So that's what substituted in, in a couple of places. As signed off on by the Concord Town Manager and Carlisle Board of Selectmen, so I also changed that to reflect who specifically signed the document.
So, I'm sorry, because I'm trying to read my edits.
Sure, yeah, no, no, I'm trying to.
But in that, number three, community access, so. You can summarize some of the planning of the towns. Okay, I'm sorry.
Nope, no problem. In that last paragraph on page one, we had some conversation about employees being required to do the query and the fingerprints and all, and whether anyone else using the studio would have to do that. In our discussion, I will point at Jared when I say that. We believe that anyone using the studio with access to kids has to follow our volunteer policies. I, my, my feeling is that it's on the town to make sure that anyone else using the studio who's not going to have direct access to kids, if they're volunteering or users of the space, don't necessarily need to. What the town's obligation then is to make sure they remain in the studio and don't have contact with our kids. Employees of the studio is a different situation. We're all in agreement, I think, that those employees need to be really working under the auspice of as if they were a high school employee. And that's something the town proposed to us before we brought it up.
Not too far down the weeds, but what about the fact that I may go in there not quarried for Concord, for Carlisle? But there's kids in there.
And that's on the town, the leadership of the town to make sure that the kids don't have access to anybody who hasn't.
Okay.
I can't, I don't imagine that's possible in practice. That we could ensure that citizens coming in the exterior door wouldn't meet students who came in the interior door. I don't want to throw problems this way, but, but there was a time when that studio quarried every member.
Every volunteer that came in.
And the school took responsibility for it, and it was, it wasn't even negotiable. You use the studio, you submit a query.
So, but in this instance.
Query goes here or to the principal's office.
But why don't we leave that to the town to query that?
Well, because you're sitting here claiming that it's the town's responsibility. I think the town has to consent to that.
Right.
We can't simply dictate it from this table and say that our students, that we've done diligence by our students.
True.
Sorry.
Isn't that what Ms. Reed's, or that was implied, you said?
So my issue with this was the first sentence talks about all employees, volunteers, citizens and/or vendors. And the second sentence just says employees.
Right, so the employees were specifically pulled out because we're putting more requirements on them than we are volunteers or vendors. So that the employees have to have queries, fingerprints, and if you go to the next page, adhere to everything in the handbook, the employee handbook.
Right.
So the sentence is meant to really specifically outline a broader expectation for employees.
Or, so maybe you just need to say in addition, employees.
Now.
I took that to mean different things.
A year from now, we might be having a different kind of conversation. As, as you know from recent meetings, there is discussion about how there could be satellite studios elsewhere in the two towns. But this is our flagship right now for this entire community enterprise. And in addition, when somebody gets active over there, the expectation is they're going to get really active. They're not going to drop in and make a request and leave. They're going to come in and get trained and use equipment and then come back and use more equipment, and suddenly we've got these long-term engagements with people. Now, they're few in number, thankfully. You can't get people to volunteer the kind of time necessary to produce TV. Not many people. Nonetheless, I'm not comfortable with the, with the risk exposure that we have, I just want.
Well, we certainly could tell the town that we would like them to honor inquiries. The difference now, when the high school is running the queries before CCTV as an entity wasn't doing its own queries. The town certainly does. I'm a little, I really prefer that the town is doing all the management aspects of this. And some of the hope, I think, was that, given their, their ability to do so as oversight, that we wouldn't own management and checking of queries and things like that, but their employees in that, if we add volunteers.
As opposed to us only, can we just specify that they need to?
Yeah.
So to me, it becomes a question of who is required to do what. So here, the query is only required for employees. If I'm understanding correctly, Court, you're saying in the past volunteers have also been required to query?
Right.
Which I, which I do agree with. I think that makes sense.
Well.
Then it's a question of citizens and vendors. How, why do you go, you know, a vendor, someone who is a vendor to the high school, you know, the UPS delivery person is not necessarily query to come in and deliver something, right? So, right, so we don't, I don't want to take it to the extreme of all of these have to be queryed because you don't want a vendor having to be queryed just to deliver, but somewhere in there.
The expectation was somebody considered a member, and a member was somebody who had identified themselves as a resident or legitimate user and then a contractual agreement, membership constitutes, you do this and we do that between the organization. My worry here is tomorrow, if we asked who came through the studio today, I'm not sure if there would be a record even who was there. So I think we just need basic assurances. And how it gets worked out with the town is secondary to this idea that there has to be a query, but I think there has to be a known, known.
Responsible party.
Yeah, in this day and age, I think we're remiss to say this is a town piece of real estate in that high school. Because here we are trying to make a really harmonious campus where every adult in the room in the school has professional and appropriate relations that are good with these kids. But then we're saying, wait, we're building a wall, one door called the TV studio because we don't have our normal policies operating behind that door. I think we can do better than that.
Yeah, I think that the student environment has to be, talk to her, but don't talk to her. I think that they need to be queryed.
Volunteers need to be queryed.
I think it's not unreasonable for us to ask the town to.
Oh, no, I'm totally in agreement.
Yeah.
I think that is, I tend to go with Heather, like, I think that's just a different entity. We query vendors who are going to actually be present for lengths of time because we've contracted with them.
Right, right. I don't think we need to query vendors.
You can apply the same, a long-term vendor.
Right, so then I think you do have to look at definitions. Employees and volunteers, I think, definitely should be queryed. When it says citizens, it's hard to, you know, do we need to define what a volunteer is? And, and what is this referencing that's a citizen who's in there? You know, it's kind of a vague.
Are they volunteers?
Yeah, is the word volunteer a word?
Residents, is that the thing?
If you live or work in Concord or Carlisle or go to school here, you're afforded privileges. It's been typically either in the guidelines or in practice or both.
So, so how do, the question is how we need to specify who needs to be queryed? You know, is it volunteer?
It's users.
Or users. Anyone who's using the space. I don't have a lot of history here, so. But I'm agreeing with Court that I feel like we do need a little more.
Let me take the feedback. I think if I talk with them a little more, they'll understand more of what we're trying to capture.
Keep sending this, that one's there.
Sorry, Lauren.
Well, and I think part of your conversation could be, what did you envision having in place? And that plan on the town side can meet our plan on our side with the ultimate objective of a really accessible studio that doesn't create new problems for us.
For the town.
Right, yeah. In number four, we had looked at defining how.
The top of that page?
Well, we just, so what we did there was we aligned it to the actual title of the handbook. And we have one handbook for both districts, so it's the CPS and CCR state employee here.
Oh, that's what it's called.
Yeah. I did, we did take out the exhibit because it's huge, so I don't think you attach the whole thing to this document. Yeah, it was a good suggestion, Mary. Number four, we, I suggested, and this is a suggestion that can be up for discussion. We have talked on how to develop this educational program that allows opportunities for the kids, our students, to use the studio. So the suggestion, expectation that we will create opportunities for student learning involvement under an education program developed immediately, created upon by the Concord Town Manager or designee and Superintendent of Schools or designee. And then it's the language that's been there to share resources. Maintenance of facility, we just cleaned up a little bit of language. Approval of the district, the plan for maintenance of annual care and such. We wordsmithed to say it's responsible, the town to supervise and conduct annual care and maintenance. And then under care, it includes, we removed use of contract services.
Look at that again. I think that was the heading for that, maybe, no? The use of contract services.
I think you're right, Mary, now that you've read it in a different context. So that's the heading for the section below. It got bumped up. I don't know if that seemed like reformatting. It doesn't make sense where it is. It does make sense if you see that. And then under fees, the district, so now that we have the agreement between the two towns to reference, that changes this, clarifies this section. The district will not assess fees or use charges to the Town of Concord for activities. It is, the town is going to assess fees to Carlisle.
Right, but the high school's not.
We are not going to charge Concord. This got interesting as we reviewed the town's responsibility for utilities, electrical cable, toll home. This afternoon, the way we typically do that, like here at Ripley for our tenant here, or the town's tenant here, is to take the square footage and divide out. So we started doing that math today. Two hundred and forty thousand square feet of the high school, and they've got, the TV studios may be nine hundred. So we actually started to talk ourselves into how little money that was and whether we thought it was worth the annual effort and this process. And so we suggested crossing it out and considering that a really nice mutual relationship.
I think that's how much Harvard charged WGBH for the studio in Westermark.
Right. The term, we changed the date to February. The rest, the most substantial thing here. Amendments, revisions or substantive changes to the agreement may be reviewed and proposed. Now that had some language about the annual budget process. So we've taken that out and said upon requested either party, and then it goes on to say it must be documented in writing by the town manager and authorized. So that allows either side to say this agreement needs to get looked at. And then finally, you'll remember one of our last conversations back in October or so, was the notice if we were to need the studio space. So the question of how much notice, we talked our way through what we thought would be a pretty reasonable way it would happen. We look at October 1 enrollments. Enrollment's going to drive whether you need the space, probably nothing else. October 1 enrollments could help inform us for the coming school year. So October 1, we would say as a school district, we're going to need the space for overflow. Offices and, I was trying to envision what for, but offices and such. With the need to have the space by July 1, so anything we have to do with it could be ready for September. So October to July is the nine of March.
And we would note that it's not withdrawing from the property, it's moving within the property.
Yes.
Which is highly unlikely.
Highly unlikely, right.
It's got nine hundred square feet right now.
Yeah, specially designed. That we get a lot of benefit out of, because our kids can use it, but it just says all my.
Not too likely to happen.
So I really wish I could add the intermunicipal agreement.
Of course you do. So if I am taking away correctly, it's that piece on the volunteers and community access to the studio.
Yeah.
Yeah, it needs to be really clear who and how it's going to be done.
Yeah, which is obviously an important conversation for us to have with the town.
Do you want a quick double D that I happened to catch?
Oh, are we going to do that too?
Okay, never mind.
Go ahead.
Why don't you email me the typos?
So we'll vote on this next meeting? Or.
I'll bring it back.
Or as.
Oh, an A and B.
Let me clarify with the town, so we're all on the same page and then we'll bring it back in February.
So, you said earlier we are meeting February 12.
Yes.
I think that.
Not only Concord.
I just wanted.
Okay, so that was put as at the later part.
On the 26th.
That's according to this.
That's what I wanted.
Yeah, Concord on the 12th. My fault.
I, I know, okay.
So we'll bring it back on the 26th.
So there's no meeting, no region on the 12th?
No.
Right.
You can come if you want.
I'm not coming.
Just to be clear.
Okay.
You can come if you bring dessert.
Or just drop it off, Mary.
Right, that's good enough, too.
Okay, and now we're ready to discuss the capital warrant article for the high school. Several of us have done some work on that, right?
You looking at me?
Yeah, I am, because you've done a lot of work. And, you know, we obviously have to get some input from, from all of you as to, you know, what should be included in any potential presentation, strategy.
So what I did to help us frame this conversation, what I believe we need is, we've had a lot of conversation about the middle school, Concord School Committee, which has evolved into a, let's get a presentation that we all, you know, can understand and take with us to coffee's or to whatever, you know, conversations and communication. Yeah, we all have the same slide deck in essence. We're doing, we're.
And you've scheduled those.
We've scheduled some of them. So we're going to get to the scheduling aspect of that, which is trying to make a master schedule of those that will be school committee, I mean, middle school articles and those, you know, that would be basically the.
One or the other, both kind of thing?
Exactly, like what they look like. So that's, that's, I have the new listing of dates that I'll propose that people, we will do after this. But the other thing I did, which if you'll indulge this, is I kind of tried to start to put together the history of how we got to where we are and start to walk through some of it to see if people are missing anything and walk through sort of aspects of what do we think is important to convey. So these are just my draft notes, and I have a few extras, but they're super, super draft, so I don't want anyone to go printing those in the newspaper, but I'll give them to you. Yeah, I got some more. I have mine electronic.
Yeah, send me.
You share? So at least a couple, so you can follow up. So at least a couple, so you can follow up, we're talking about.
Anyway, so I'm just going to take you what I'm, in my research, what I, as far as I've gotten. Hopefully to be helpful in terms of where we go from here. And make sure everyone understands sort of what I, you know, in essence, I want to remind everyone, and I did this research, but we moved into the school in the spring of 2015. But we still had an old building we were taking down, and we were still using the old parking. So in fact, we did not have a new parking lot till November, the following school year, okay? Through the summer and all the finishing of abatement and taking the rest of the school down and dealing with the old school. So in November, that's when we sort of opened the new parking. Ever since then, there've been tweaks to this of how to approach the new parking. And initially, the new parking was only for seniors and faculty and teachers. Some of the stuff we've talked about, but the whole construction of that new parking lot was based on a previous surface and primarily how much the lot was going to be covered. By right, in Massachusetts, because it's in a conservancy water district, groundwater conservancy district, you can have fifteen percent lot coverage. The old high school was over twenty-two percent. The new high school was approved at eighteen percent, eighteen point nine-three percent. That was with a lot of conversation around how much we can pay, how many parking. We basically got there and said, we're going to fit as much parking as we can in that. To be accurate, the old high school had a lot more parking, both.
Legally.
Because there was illegal parking spots, but we also, part of, if you consider the old parking lot, you also had the access to the turf parking lot. That was never counted in high school's parking, but was another place where people could go. That's almost a hundred spots. So the new CCHI's parking spots officially include four hundred and twenty-nine striped lot, spots. And that's just from the opening of the parking lot, right, Lauren? I think I got that right. I also point out sixteen are handicapped, so unless you are, you know, have a handicap, an issue, and you have a handicap sticker or whatever, can park one of those, it really is four hundred and thirteen. So we're dramatically below where we were at the high school. So, and that is when I tell, giving that number of four thirteen or four twenty-nine, that includes the turf parking lot. So you follow me so far?
So four twenty-nine includes the ninety-four.
Yes, four twenty-nine includes the ninety-four.
So it's like thirty, a hundred and twenty-ish.
Short, less.
Less.
Yeah, and that fewer. And then, and that, then you throw in a bunch of the other sort of illegal spots if people couldn't park it around that old high school, but you get the picture. Parking pressures, so from the moment we opened, existed. And there was even a parking presentation I pulled up, which was a revised one from an original parking plan. And it stated in this presentation, based on all available data, we will not have enough spots for faculty, staff, seniors. No, we will, sorry, we, there will be no visitor spots, no junior student parking. So out of the gates, we were already crunched.
And that came out when?
November 2015.
Okay, so just.
And, and, and part of this is also, what I would like to do is be able to get on our website, all this in a timeline as we go forward, but it also presumably would be in a presentation that we pulled together. And so there are a number of things, and again, our current administration has been under, you know, incredible time constraints of other, because it involved a lot of things, so I've gotten some of this. But I want to remind you, I think Heather was on the committee at the time. Mary, I'm not sure if you were on the region at the time, but the, in the November, I mean, sorry, in the early 2016, that current administration said, we can look at another spot and get, try and get eighty to a hundred spots for parking, because we were having a lot of issues that we continue to have. And this school committee on which I sat, and I think you were a part of that, said, we don't want to do that, let's see if we can.
See if we can work it out.
We can work it out, people will change behaviors, there's not enough, we'll make this work. They just have to understand that that's, it's a new normal. So over the last three and a half years, we've had this consistent pressure. And we haven't noticed a result in people, you know, changing habits and going away and not asking. So then I moved to, in this conversation, my notes, that the things that we've tried, and again, I haven't got this not comprehensive list, but I wanted to point out that we went through several variations on how to address the issue. Signing all, we assigned all the spots to the seniors, and it was a first come, first served to anybody else, which usually was juniors. That resulted in a lot of kids coming at six and six thirty in the morning, trying to get those spots, and the first come, first served, sleeping in their cars, sometimes in the winter with the car running. And obviously negated our later start time, you know, goals of getting these kids more sleep. There was a time at point, they changed how the spots were allocated, and all the teachers, anybody who was a staff or teacher, was moved to the turf parking lot, because that was hard to access during the buses, it's all very complicated, but anyway. And there was a time, I think most recently, where we rented spots from BD Center. I think that Laurie did a great job articulating how that went, the bin come meeting when they asked. So it didn't make us great neighbors. So we had some issues there. If you can imagine kids parking when they shouldn't, or taking more spots than they should, BD trying to run their business, you can see that the rub would exist.
Oh, it just goes on, because then it's just even about if families had, never mind spots we were trying to say formally we were using. If a family had a pass, it's probably still a challenge for BD. The kids and families start to think they can park there, because they're paying for the pass.
So they park there for a school day and taking up spots from the BD's business.
That's, you know, proved to be an ongoing challenge.
The most recent numbering of all the spots. That makes it really stressful for everybody at this table, whenever you go to lunch.
It does.
Because there's no place to park, because it belongs to somebody else. And then there's, we know of all the issues, it came from people leaving for lunch, because it's open campus, someone taking their spot. People come, they're on the first period, someone's in their spot, they're late to class. So we, that, that is only, I think, caused more angst. And there, our biggest rub there is the visitors come, parents, anybody just dropping by, and there, there's no place to park.
I don't know if you should put the black market that's evolved from that.
Right. So there's an aspect that evolved. Exactly, that's a good point. The black market that evolved from all this, where those who don't need their.
Very entrepreneurial.
They can make a little money selling it to a junior or something else, someone who's.
We do stop that when we know. We got the parking privileges because we found out about it.
Wow.
So a little bit of the continued history, so then we can discuss this, but I want to remind everybody. So then in June 2017, we approved a campus advisory committee that was charged with looking at all of campus and all the needs, of which Bob and Mary were on, and assess the campus needs for future and get some priorities possibly, and really get a lot of feedback broadly. And I think they did a great job, there were all kinds of ideas that came out of that. But in May 2018, they've, they issued their report, which I have a copy, again, all this, we should get a little bit organized in one spot. But in which they, it was clear in their experience that parking was a real priority for people, but it needed further exploration, because there were other things that also people were interested in, and we didn't want to preclude any other events, I mean, other option, like a track or an amenities building or some of these things we've talked about. So it needed further exploration. So in August 2018, the campus oversight committee is formed, and that was just last summer. And I was on that, Mary and Bob, and Mary chaired that. And we went very carefully but quickly through figuring out what, how to address the campus advisory committee's report and the issues around parking and other interests on campus. We recommended a feasibility to be done on the campus and see if all these things could fit, and if so, how. And that was, then by October, we had approved an RFP that was written and issued and put out. Gale Associates was awarded that bid, and December, they issued their first report. And I believe they, there's still a little more work being done for us.
They asked the full report at the end of the month.
Coming at the end of the month. So if you're not exhausted yet. I did, okay, so there, there is sort of in lies the history. Part of the reason I started to do that was to really get at how long we'd been at this and how many different things we did.
Can I add to that?
Yes.
Well, I was doing some, this came up, I sent this to Laurie. That there was an article in the Carlisle Mosquito in 2003 about the skate park and the construction of the new skate park. And a Carlisle, a Concord resident is quoted as saying, as part of this discussion, because they were worried about where they would have space to put this. And this person said, if we can get more kids to skateboard to school, it will alleviate the parking problems. 2003. September 2003.
So I didn't go all.
So we had parking problems back in 2003.
How'd that work out?
Yes, I, I believe this goes way back, and again, I haven't done all the research, but I, I know I've talked to Betsy Billado, who was a school committee member, I'm going to guess, like fifteen or twenty years ago. And they wrangled over this issue, and actually, part of the old school parking was not actually officially a parking lot. It was gravel first, and then it was paved over. There's some history to like how that evolved, that additional parking.
We have some traffic islands now that are.
Yeah.
Not legal spots that are.
They're very hard to drive up on.
I've seen plenty of kids do it. Don't tell their parents.
You don't want to add more paving? Can, can we just move this article and use it to buy a skateboard for every student? Get them all there without the cars.
Skateboard from Carlisle.
Skateboard and a helmet for everyone.
In the snow.
Yes.
You prefaced this as being a draft. It's a pretty thorough draft.
Well, thank you. And it's certainly a draft, because I just sat and did it my little old self, you know, periodically. Wanted to, to frame how we can approach this and make sure I didn't miss anything and see, see if this is the right approach. Below, I started to talk about, I started to just list needs. What are the parking needs? Why, why, you know, you get a lot of questions around what is so necessary. And again, I just, this is not an exhaustive list, but this is stuff I've heard about. And we've had people, I went back to a meeting, I don't know if you remember, last spring, we were thinking about trying just to gravel and get a few spots, and we had seven or eight parents here. And each one of them, I have them somewhere in my notes, but each one of their issues around parking was different. Some of them actually included cartpooling to a sport or, or something with other kids. But again, you know, their stories are, you know, legitimate reasons why people need to have cars. So, and I have some here, sports teams, even our own sports team play off campus. My kid played ice hockey, two of them, and they were responsible for getting to the rink, which is not on campus. If you have ice hockey equipment, golf likewise, those things are not allowed on a bus. I mean, it would be a bus if it was an ice hockey bus going to a game, but you couldn't take your ice hockey stuff to school. On the bus, it takes you to school.
Let's get into the weeds. The ski team had to bring their stuff to school and have to take the bus to the show and then back.
And had to get, yes, that's right.
So what's, like, oh, like that.
But a lot of.
The PD was very clear that the kids had to, had to come and go on a school bus.
Right, we, that, that was not the case for ice hockey, but.
No, you're talking about different things. You're talking about going to be game, going to the meat of school bus.
No, every, every practice.
No, it's, it's the practices too.
Every practice.
For skiing was pretty original, but.
So I, I don't, I'm just.
We're getting to the weeds.
Yeah.
But yes. Anyway, and some of this is, you know, we want to be accurate and be sure we tell the stories, but I'm, I'm trying to capture generally what the needs have, that have come up.
Yeah, so I went on the high school website the other day, and I counted up the clubs. Can you guess how many clubs we have at the high school club?
Over a hundred.
Well, not that many, sixteen-one, I count. Sixteen-one. Now, some of them don't meet, you know, every week and seasonally and so forth. Some meet early in the morning, so that would require a trip by car, I imagine. Seven fifteen, tableau.
Oh, definitely.
And then, obviously, all the teams and other special activities. So I'm curious, have we ever heard any kind of figure what percentage of the student body actually has this really unusual schedule, especially after school is over? Is it like sixty, seventy percent?
Oh, more than that.
More than that.
Sports alone is ninety over the course of a year, isn't it?
But that's where we have a layoff.
No, no, no.
Once it clubs together, it's ninety something.
You're talking about two different things, are you on campus after school and off campus?
Even if it's on campus and if it's off time, if you have to be there at seven fifteen for a club meeting or.
Oh, I see, yeah.
Then you can't take the bus to school.
If it requires a car to come to the high school with. Peter, could you come up and identify yourself?
My name is Peter Atlas, I'm a teacher at the high school. Is the late bus still at five o'clock? Because the late bus was at five o'clock when school ended at two oh one, thirty years ago. And I believe school has been getting, has been closing later and later, and the late bus has never. So people just extend their rehearsals and their practice beyond five o'clock when the late bus goes, because they don't have enough time otherwise.
Thank you.
Well, you can see, there's a lot, there's a lot we can do to capture, I mean, capture a lot of these, and we probably want to do them in sort of more thematic way. But, and as you see, I did some of that, jobs after school, taking care of siblings after school, club sports, which are not school sports, but, you know, exist somewhere else. Music lessons or performances are the equivalent of that, often in Boston, or if you're singing, or if you're playing an instrument. And then the issue around visitors, some examples for why you come to visit and you can't park. Volunteering in the classroom, PA meetings, Concord Ed Fund meetings, chap ruining duties, speakers, IEP meetings. So again, I'm not an exhaustive list, but sort of trying to go and capture these themes as we go through this process of kind of communicating why we, or how we got here.
And media network be on that, too?
Oh, yeah, the new.
Yes.
It seems to me we got this far, we got to the warrant article because I, I'm guessing, I want to check this, your, your findings were similar to mine, and that is, when we look at this from a simple school district perspective, we think that we can dictate some changes on behalf of behavior. Driving patterns, scheduling patterns and so on. And yet, time and time again, talking with individual students, parents and families, I find, no, it's not something that we can solve by changing those patterns, behaviors, choices. We want them to use the school, we want them to use the resources the way we designed them. I haven't found one student or parent to whom I could say, your need for transportation is not legitimate, it's not genuine. Please.
No, I'm, and, and, and I'm the, I'm the negative one here, so I'm going to, I'm going to prepare you for these sessions. You'll be overly prepared. You are not going to hear from the parents, like me, who now has a kid who graduated, so I can say this, who did not need to drive to school, but by virtue of the fact that he was a senior, he got a parking space. Those, those parents are not going to say, I'll give it up. And there are times during the year where he did need it, or days during the week, but not every hundred and eighty days. And that, and that's, that can be an implementation issue, virtually impossible to manage, right? Because if every day, every kid's needs are different, that's a nightmare, right? But, but you're not going to hear from those parents that say, you know what? You know, my kid's got a spot and they don't need it.
Well, so to that point, which I think is very fair, and I think that those exist plenty.
Probably a pretty small number.
Yeah, I do want to clarify, we didn't give spots to every senior, they had to put into the lottery for them.
Right.
So anyone with interest got a spot. So how we decide interest and need and, I'm not.
Yeah, you didn't have someone qualifying. You didn't have someone qualifying to park.
They, they had to express an interest and then.
So I, I guess where I, as I went through this process and started thinking about it and all that we've been through, I feel a little bit like, you know, the league comes here, so we try to close it up or, you know, or put a band-aid on it, and then it's over here. And then we're trying to address these issues as they come. And what we need to do is address like a really fundamental issue around changing habits and pull way back and look at what is the underlying issue. And to your sustainability committee being an opportunity to start to address, okay, if this is really, you know, where is the need versus, you know, what, what can we do to compromise on this? But we can't do, we, we're constantly just running up against trying to, you know, solve a, you know. But we can't do, we, we're, we're constantly just running up against trying to, you know, solve a, you know, rent spaces here, stripe these spaces, make these different color, put those guys there, where it's just kind of moving the parts instead of pulling way back and saying, we got a lot of work to change or to understanding if we can change this, this mode. It hasn't changed because we've mandated different things in the last three and a half years. And many of the people you spend hours with have very legitimate reasons and very legitimate stresses. And candidly, going back to this, you know, challenge, success and stress and all that's going on with these kids. And this is just adding, you know, more stress to a lot of kids and we're, we still got a lot of work to do, as you pointed out earlier with, you know, what's happened in our schools. So, somehow, I, you know, it's, it's about what the actual need is, but it's also about what this whole culture is kind of, you know, now got us all tangled up in ourselves.
Well, it's interesting because in the Carlisle, I mean, with meet, budget meeting, you know, you had one parent who brought up, well, you know, we're all gonna have self-driving cars and. I, I mean, I think there's something to that. My husband wakes up every morning and says, is it today? So, there's something to that too, when you think about sustainability. I mean, are we gonna, are we gonna build all these three, you know, however many extra spaces we're gonna build and then find out that we don't need them in the long run?
Nobody owns a car.
Right, because nobody owns a car. The car will visit you and pick you up and then go back to its parking. Or to the next person.
Well, I think that, I, personally, I think that self-driving cars are a little ways off.
No, I, I know that, but, but.
I, I have a husband who actually is invested in like, you know, trying to develop that software and I think it's coming.
Could he talk to you?
But I don't. I, I just say, I think, I think for, for our kids' sake, for our family's sake, for the community of those kids going to school and administration teachers, I really feel like that.
We need to solve it.
We need to solve it and we need to expect it. It's not even, even the change of habits, let alone self-driving cars, not gonna be for a while. That's, that's my.
Yeah, no, that's, that's an excellent point.
Well, I don't, so Lori said in the Carlisle FinCon meeting, and I think depending on how many spaces we get, it's still not gonna be enough. That, that's what, that's what frightens me is.
Yeah. So, from my side, I answered at both FinCon meetings, actually. It isn't gonna be enough, but we are going to have done everything we can possibly do. The impervious surface limit alone is gonna cap it at that. And then I think we say to this community, we have done everything we can do, we have to learn to live within this. Let's talk about the structures and ways that we can do that. And the short-term way is you just lottery the slots off and we still deal a little bit of fallout. Although, after we spend a lot of money and the town supports us on that, I think I have a lot more. A lot less. Yeah, a lot more leverage is probably the right word. And then we, we work on the habits and all of that. But at that point, there is nothing more for this administration and this school committee to do because we'll be out of options. And then it's about how do we live with this campus and the way it functions. And I think until we hit that point, that's, that's where we're, where we've been in the, kind of the muck here for the last, certainly in my eighteen months of. The landfill space has been sitting there with almost a sign on it saying, why can't I park here? And it needed to get talked about and I think advocated for, which is what you're doing now. And ultimately, it's the community's, community's plural decision as to whether it gets supported or not. My hope is they do support it and then we legitimately put spaces in and say, that's all we can do. If they don't support it, we still can say that's all we could do, because there's.
That'll be the answer.
So, that was what I was hoping to get to. I'm still hoping for the easier outcome of. Not easier, for the outcome of, yes, we've got more options to take the stress off of where we are, but ultimately, it won't fix it. And that has to be part of the discussion right, right off, that not every junior's gonna get a parking spot. They tend to drive as the year goes on, so I think there's probably some manageable ways to navigate that because they pretty much age in as they go. But that, that will be clarity of the message, no question.
So, my thinking on this is that, you know, obviously, stress is a multifaceted problem. We're not gonna solve it, I don't feel it'll ever be solved probably, but we can do things on the margin. And this stress is, I'm most concerned about the students because I, I do hear some stories here and there, even at my age.
Next to you.
But there's also stress with the teachers and with the staff and the visitors, et cetera. I go out there once in a while during the day and I look around and there's nothing, there's no open spaces. Visitors are all taken.
People use the facility because they know there's no parking.
Could be. So, here's, here's, here's an opportunity to do a little something. I, it's gonna cost money, no question, so I shouldn't say little. It's, it's gonna cost something, but it'll have a real result. And, and we got more spaces and we get less stress. And including that for the teachers and the administration, the principals, et cetera. And on that basis, I, I, I'm in favor of this and I, I just hope also, at the same time, that we find people in Concord and Cal buying more electric cars, because that would be really helpful. So, your next car is electric, right?
My next car is a skateboard.
But no, I, I think that's, that's really.
All seriousness, if electric was a direction, you know, really that we run conduit under the.
Right.
We, we called them out today and asked them to price out a few charging stations.
Oh, good.
Just to see.
Oh, good.
I will say, I'm, my concern all along is I don't wanna use that as an incentive or anything else because the kid, the teenagers I know don't get to pick the car they drive. It's the, the adults making those decisions.
Yeah.
And just like some of the other incentives we've toyed around with, I don't wanna have and have nots over who gets parking or where they park or any of that. But we thought we'd ask them to give us the information at least.
I wonder if we could look into some grants.
Yeah.
Seventy years ago, we were eligible for grants in the district. Before your time chose not to apply.
Grants for, for the charging.
For charging stations at schools, yeah.
I would just like to say this, the history that you put together, Joanna, not only, I mean, very detailed and helpful, but also to the point, you're just kind of painting.
Yeah.
The, the picture of what's gone on and the numbers is really helpful to me because although I obviously have voiced support for this most of the way through, but certainly have had my own questions and reservations. And the hardest question to answer when people push back is why does this, you know, why are you treating this like a right, not a privilege, right? That's, I think, one of the hardest questions to answer, especially when the spots are expensive. But I think to look back at the history and see that this is not a question of, and this is also to Lori's point, that there's an end point. This is not a continuous, we want more, we want more, we want more. You look back and we have significantly less parking than we had five years ago. And the number that we were, that we're looking at now will at least get us back in a similar range, maybe not quite exactly, given the illegal parking that was done. But to, I feel like that could make a significant difference. If we were, at that time, maybe there were some issues and people wanted skateboards anyway, but it was livable. It wasn't such a big point of stress. And if we could, you know, we gave it these three years, we, some of us on the committee decided a few years ago to say, let's try to make it work, let's try to change behavior, right? And we gave it our best shot and it has created a lot of student stress doing that. And so, laying it out like this really helps me to see it as, you know what? We tried to decrease the parking and we tried to change behavior and it has created a lot of student stress. And to do this at least gets us back to where we were. It's kind of like back to ground zero, you know, the starting point. And then we can just level it off and hopefully kind of de, decrease some of that stress and pressure. So, that's how I'm seeing it now. So, thank you for putting this together because it's really helpful to just paint that picture.
If I understand your numbers correctly, we're down a hundred and twenty-one spots, a hundred and twenty-one countable spots. That doesn't even include where people used to park. So, that's, that's pretty significant.
It's significant, it's a lot less than we used to have.
Your, your questions, which I think are very helpful because they're among the most challenging ones that we're all asking ourselves and each other in town. I think we can add some others. The question around what we are trying to do to mitigate this. I think we need somewhere to make clear that we put a lot of restrictions on young people and their driving. And it means we're not gonna go ever tell anybody to start carpoolsing because the law says they can at a certain age and so on. So, we quickly forget that a sixteen and seventeen-year-old driver is, doesn't have the same prerogative as we do as older drivers. I think we've got to tackle head-on what we're trying to do to make our busing more efficient. By efficient, what I mean is more attractive and the obstacles to that. There might be a reason why parents and other folks in this town don't take the bus. Because there are town buses for them, for example, although we don't have a traditional municipal service. But fixed routes and our lifestyles in suburban town are not particularly compatible. And it's true for us, it's true for kids too.
Yeah.
It's, it's true for kids too, so. Are all of these problems intractable? No, but they're pretty darn unyielding. You know, all we can do, I think Bob says it well, is we can work around the margins. With all of us.
So, I like your point that we should also be addressing what can we do to, to balance that kind of counter-sustainable feel here? You know, what else? And, which comes right back to the work that you were talking about, Lori. And I love that we have this sustainability committee now and so it's great, I think, that we can bring this full circle and talk about, all right, let's, let's balance it in some way, but something we need to do.
What's every offset we can find?
Right.
And, you know, that issue that is brought up in terms of the late buses, could we maybe find out some more information?
Sure.
Because that, I mean, maybe it's moving them up, maybe moving them back, I mean. Worth looking on too.
Talked about a transportation review and looking and all that.
Oh, we're.
That makes sense to.
Good, good.
Okay, Joanna, that's great. So, what's, so what's that like? Is there a communication out plan?
Well, yeah, oh, so actually.
Yeah, so.
Joanna, before you go there.
Sustainability a muck over here.
Quick remark, this fits within the larger context of the warrant article, which includes accessibility to the.
It includes the repair of the loop road and paving and sidewalk and lighting.
This has some other things connected, okay, thank you.
That, that you're gonna have to double-check for, like major conflicts at town meeting. Basically, what this is, is my attempt at a full two-month calendar approach to town meeting. And what I put in here for Christine and Mary's sake, wherever it says S C Coffee, we can take those and make them a theme, like the, you know, the high school warrant articles or we can make it a middle school feasibility study, or we can just always be open to both. A little harder if you're from Carlisle and you show up and we talk about middle school the whole time. It is not designated. This includes Sandborne and, uh, tours of Sandborne and Peabody every Saturday, except for the one at the end of vacation week. I did put in the snow days and rearranged the dates for the public forum. There's two public forums in there, both say the middle school feasibility study. Whether we need a public forum for this warrant article, I don't know. That's one question. Two is, I can just randomly, you know, assign different topics to the coffees. I have basically done one a week until you get to March and then there's two a week, maybe a couple, four weeks out and another two weeks before, town meeting is three a week. Somehow, I have to get my, I've also put our own school committee meetings on here and I did put the FinCon budget hearings on here with.
One quick question.
Sorry about the all-day February vacation. I'm trying to figure out how to like, have it print what I want, but.
Do we have any possible dates for Carlisle?
What do you mean for, oh, Carlisle budget hearings?
Well, that, not so much, but I was thinking the, the high school warrant article.
Yes, so that's why I just said, where I've written, and S C Coffee, Discussion and Questions on Town Meeting Articles, is a placeholder for all or just high school or just CPS.
Okay.
I didn't know how you, if you want me to assign it so it just evenly pans out, I can do that. All right, what I want is to give this to you electronically when we agree and we just sign up so we can share in this endeavor. I don't know if this is the right approach or not, or what you think.
So, if we were to see this and study our own respective calendars, we would sign up and post, convene, present or co, presumably. We'd be looking for balance of the topics, because we've got several to bring forward, balance for dates. My first impression is this is pretty ambitious and that's, that's fine, but it may get whittled down simply by availability.
Availability, look at that.
I'm imagining you want people to not only get into Peabody and Sandborne, but physically see the high school and see one or several of these in the town of Carlisle as well, something for access, for region discussion.
Yeah, these, these are, no locations have been.
Oh, as in locations, yes. I thought you meant tours. Doing tours of Peabody and Sandborne just.
So, it's more like, if, you've got all the possible dates out there, it's, it seemed to make sense.
Yeah.
Just if we see who signs up, maybe that dictates some of the.
Yeah.
For the, the. School committee coffee ones at least.
Yes.
And then where, topic and where.
Yeah, we could do that base, no, we did at one point, we talked about here, but one concept in terms of when we do joint ones versus C M S ones was that closer to town meeting, as in more likely in March, it would make more sense to have the regional ones that are budgeting high school stuff, whereas early on might make more sense. Well, CPS, the, the middle school stuff will bleed all the way through. But it seemed like people might get more interested and engaged in high school stuff as you get closer. Whereas the middle school.
Imagine it's February, it's February and March. The, the middle, the CPS stuff is a little hard because I've got tours on every Saturday.
Right.
Which we thought would be a good idea, so you can always get a tour of Peabody at nine thirty and a Sandborne at eleven on Saturday or vice versa, whatever. That's, that's if we can parallel enough people to really cover those. And I think as, you know, as we get into them, one person is enough, but maybe we might want to do a couple of things. But anyway, so that's February and March. And then February and March is in your mind, you can think February is once a week, a coffee, and March, it's once a week until the last two weeks. And then it goes kind of progressively, two a week and then three a week, right before or something. That's usually when people get involved and focus on. So, and we did, I did two, the forums, a morning and an evening forum on the, the middle school. So, what I would say is I'm happy to have you guys look at your calendars and give me your availability of this and then I'll just go to work like assigning, you know, if it's logically ones that you and Mary could be at and those become the high school or that kind of, and then I, the only other question is whether or not you wanna have a forum on parking or.
Well.
I would love a forum on parking.
Sure.
Then I would do something, put something in there for that. I don't know.
Can I tell when the kids can be there?
Yeah.
Well, we can have it during the day, when school's in session here at the high school.
See, I'm gonna.
Everybody. Everybody come show up and buy the place to park.
Why do you look so tired?
And you tell me, is this the best approach for this? And if you sat and looked at this after the meeting, if you had the update.
I think this is great, yeah.
Give me your copies, I can transcribe it, I'll do it any way you want.
But then accompanying this will be all the ways, we're gonna network with all the groups that will disseminate.
Say that again, that's gonna be additional?
Well, yeah, we've gotta publicize this.
Yeah.
We're gonna have to use every, every network we have, who in turn will distribute to their networks.
Right, and then we, so we've also talked about reaching out to all these various groups and offering ourselves up at their meetings. To say, if you'd like us to come to your next, you know, board meeting, public meeting, whatever it is, we'll show up there. So, that's, I guess, just to keep it in perspective, that we'll be adding things to this in theory.
Do we want to tape any of these tours? I don't know how conducive it is to videotape to capture what's going on in the buildings.
That could be someone's project.
I was gonna say, is there, is there some student who wants to do a project on capturing?
There probably is. There probably is. I mean, do you think February and March is too much, or do you just do all March?
I don't think so. If you can manage this.
Yeah, I also think it's worth, this was actually a suggestion from one of the groups I was talking to, taping one of our presenting, one of our, you know, whether it's a forum or coffee, but our presentation at some point, and then posting that, so that people can...
Yeah, I think all that's kind of the work we can do, once we get these...
Right, once, yeah, 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 once this is all...
Stakes in the ground, I think then February we could do some things like those.
Yeah, and start to post everything that we can.
Is there a presentation for both of these types, so one is the middle school?
The middle school, we're gonna look at later.
No, so is there a presentation for the paving and...
I would say, that's what I'm, right, I would, that's what I was proposing by doing this and kind of getting some information in one place, that we have, we collectively own a presentation. This is your background, beginning of background information, but, you know, we summarize in something that can take five minutes, and then we can have a conversation wherever it leads.
We expect it to leave here with the charge to build that next presentation.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Which will be a town meeting also, obviously, and the public hearings, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I think it's a different presentation in those settings, I think.
But I think for people...
Kind of to give background and to have a conversation, to explain all this, this, you know, paint the picture, this is why we're having this conversation.
You've gotta have it be thorough and be in one, everyone has the same talking points.
Right.
Whatever that looks like.
So, in both of these types of, like, can you serve as like a clearinghouse for feedback and questions and challenge? Like, some of these questions you raised looked like...
I think they're all, yeah.
Because here's another set of questions.
Yeah, I mean, especially if you, if you send me feedback from these things, you know, in any kind of, on an email or a document or something, I can just keep looking into it, one big document. I think...
Because we'll learn as we go along.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, we wanna capture that for everybody to be able to...
There should be more people like me.
Which is why I think we should frame some of our questions carefully, so that we are seeking and prompting people in a somewhat comparable way to make sure data are a little more dependable in the background, even though we'll get freewheeling, I'm sure, when some people share opinions.
Yes.
It's great, thank you for putting all this together.
This is a lot of work.
I know.
So you want answers from us, how soon, Joanne?
This is her calendar, right?
How soon do you want us to weigh in about availability?
I would love to have it by, you know, early next week. Because that's the last week of, or tonight, it's fine.
Availability, so you want us to, are you gonna...
I'm not gonna torture you, if you, do you tell me availability, I won't torture you.
I told you availability, does this mean you can take them off?
Exactly, I get that.
Okay, so not by a doodle call or anything, just based on this, when we can and cannot be...
I can do this way, yeah, yeah.
Got it.
Thanks, Joanne. For all much.
We'll see how it goes.
Yes.
And I think, I mean, we'll just work to make this some kind of presentation that we can the next meeting.
I think this says a lot to our community, that we wanna give them a chance to really understand what we're thinking.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the goal. That's great. So Laurie, going back to the wording of the warrant article, came up in Carlisle that we thought, because we had put these two projects together, the paving projects, that maybe that number might be a little smaller, were you gonna run up a smaller number for the warrant or campus?
So we've been talking about that since last week. We're back in the vicious circle of, to get the smaller number, you need a design to share with the contractors so they can either, either as a formal bid process or a more informed quote process.
Right.
And without the full design work, which really, a lot of the money you have built in there for contingencies is about the drainage and some of the unknowns that until, till a firm gets in there and fully designs it, we're not gonna know. So I definitely think we can say there's a potential, potential scale, you know, if we build at this scale, we'll probably have some reduced costs, and we really believe this is the high number, trying to be sure we have room for all of the requirements of what that campus involves with water and drainage and all of that, so...
Okay.
We talked ourselves out of how we could do it without a full design, which is why we had Gail do what they can.
Okay. So, these are information sessions, as opposed to advocacy.
Yes.
Right?
Yep.
You're sharing information and facts.
Which were the ones that are...
We don't want to use school resources to...
Right, exactly, absolutely, yes.
True. So I may, because we don't meet together until February 26, we may just load up more of this stuff in March. And CPS will be a little anyway, right?
Yeah, we're gonna do that.
We're gonna do that anyway?
Yeah, but I have some, I have some information sessions or coffees or whatever slated for February, but those will probably just be...
We'll probably just assume those are CPS, middle school.
As we get into such like that, okay.
So, Joanne, then I wanna come to the snow fest.
We might need your moral support.
You've got that.
All right.
Okay, we done on this subject, for now?
I think so.
Joanne, thank you so much.
I know.
Absolutely.
You just undercut all that work, that's all.
Well, we'll see.
No, this is great.
No, it really is.
Thank you.
Lot of work. Action items.
So in order to meet the borrowing requirements of the MGL, which has the 7116D, we have to have a formal, a formal vote by the school committee authorizing the borrowing. So we work with Bond Council, and they supplies the recommended motion.
So, you got through it here, I can move it? I would move that for the purpose of paying the cost of reconstruction of the access road and design and construction of a parking lot on the district's campus, including the payment of all other costs incidental and related thereto, their being hereby is authorized under and pursuant to Chapter 71, Section 16D of the General Laws and the District Agreement as amended, the incurring of debt on the full faith and credit of the district by the issuance and sale at one time or from time to time of bonds or notes in an aggregate principal amount of $2 million. Any premium received by the district upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the General Laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. And, that within seven days from the date on which this vote is adopted, the Secretary B and hereby is instructed to notify the Board of Selectment of each of the member towns of this district as to the amount and general purposes of the debt herein authorized as required by Chapter 71, Section 16D of the General Laws and by the District Agreement.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. Sorry, go ahead. I just wanna clarify, I'm pretty sure this says this in here, and I just wanna confirm for everybody, that by authorizing it for up to $2 million, that still means that if our bids come in less, we borrow less and we only spend less.
Correct.
Right. Just wanna put that out there. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Oh, next one.
The virtual school day plan.
Are we, let's see, doing that today?
I lost it.
Based on Mary's feedback.
Are you comfortable?
Yeah, I just, we need to make it pending the agreements, the MOAs with the...
Right, and I would move that the Concord Carlisle School Committee vote to approve the virtual school day plan as outlined by Dr. Hunter tonight, January 22, provided agreements are signed with the CTA and CCTA.
And bus drivers.
And bus drivers, and all relatives, staff, and unions.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So we're gonna skip the studio vote, right? And so we have a field trip left.
And there's one other field trip on there, because we had a cancellation over the snowy weekend, and they're trying to go reschedule the ski trip for the first weekend of February. So there's two trips on there, if you pull up the online version.
Okay, hold on, I'm not on the, I'm on the wrong version.
Thank you, I had to add it, or they can't go.
Do you wanna do it on the wrong version?
Oh, yeah, I see.
I'll do it, I'm on the right version.
Okay, thank you. Oh, I see it now.
I move that the Concord Carlisle School Committee vote to approve the CCHS State Field Trip to Stanford, Connecticut, with the condition that we receive a signed district liability insurance waiver, MIA, from all participants.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And now I will move that the Concord Carlisle School Committee vote to approve the rescheduled Nordic ski trip to New Hampshire.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Joanne.
And I move that the Concord Carlisle School Committee adjourn.
Second.
No discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And the Congress School Committee will stay in session?
Right.
And I'm sure, I'll put you everywhere it says yes.
All right.
Do you wanna...
Madam Chair, can we get a two-minute break?
Does John say we have a bio break?
Yes, please.
Two minutes, two minutes left.
All right, Church.
School Committee, we're back. So, we have a round of a presentation that I know Jared and Laurie have worked very hard on, with several rendition, revisions that both Heather and I sat through, so you wanna take it away? I do. So really, this has been, so you'll get the idea of where we went, and then really, this is about feedback, as to whether this is the, the way you want this presentation to flow, the content, other ideas, the things we didn't include yet. It really is the first pass of putting the middle school story in one place. There's a few spots that are gonna flesh out as time goes by, and we do some of the other work that we proposed doing, specifically the educational visioning work, which through the Facilities Planning Committee, we've got a few meetings already set with that team and a consultant, ready to come in and really look at what this, what the educational side of this discussion is about, which is providing a better learning environment for our kids for the next long-term number of years. So there's a couple placeholders for that here. I think I'll speak for Jared's sake, Ian, in his office, did the lines share the fiscal work that's here. We thought it was important to bring numbers that fit into a context, so you'll see all sorts of different ways those are shared, as well as to tell the MSBA story fairly thoroughly, because that's such a big part of the discussion as to why we are where we are. So again, open for discussion and feedback, it's got a flow to it, but it doesn't have to be the flow that we needed to start in place, so... So first, we tell the story of both schools, first Sandborne, 1964, some of the history of upgrades and roof replaced in '97, windows in 2003, 2005, boilers and water heaters in 2015, that would be the most significant work that's been done in that school in a long, long time. We do have plans for reconfiguration, as everyone here is well aware, for next year, and we feel the need to be sure, we're so accustomed to those mods outside that we almost forget they're there because we're overcrowded. So we wanna be sure, we continue to stress that we have three module buildings with two classrooms each out there, 2004, '10, and '16 they were added. Peabody opened in 1970 to address the overcrowding of Sandborne. Design is an elementary school, you'll see that's further down the list. It's a really important part of the discussion, because the minute you walk in, it's an elementary school trying to be a middle school. 1994, there was an upgrade with the elevator, the roof in '99, windows in 2003, '05. Boilers were in 2014, nothing substantial since then. All of sixth grade will be there this fall. And the conversion included adding these partitions to create classrooms and quarters, because it's really important to say that in 1970, it was all about open classrooms, and Peabody had no walls, and so those have all been added and retrofitted. Justin is etuiardist that the wall in the hallway gets a little longer every so often, like, you know, there's been phases of trying to get more and more wall there, but there are no doors, so... We've been really looking at the inefficiencies here, and we're building the detailed data lists to back up a couple of big statements, one being really big operating inefficiencies. Primarily, those come from redundant positions in utilities. At our first pass over the last few weeks, we can account for over a half a million dollars of duplication, or the cost to heat two schools instead of one, et cetera. That doesn't factor into the energy savings and some of the other things like that that happen when you, when you build new. It's just straight-up duplication. Current conditions, we wanna be sure we highlight some of the infrastructure and the status of it. The building infrastructures that are just beyond their lifespan, the exceptions would be the boilers, the water heaters, and circulation pumps. Essentially, all of the others are. The original heating lines are showing signs of corrosion. We have some great photos in a minute to go along with these statements, especially that Peabody, where the lines are buried directly in the concrete. The plumbing lines are original, and they do have lead within them. We tested constantly, we have no sign of any lead leaching into the water, but it's a regular and ongoing maintenance discussion, and, you know, there's always that potential of an issue. Sarnville roofs are by far at the end of their lifespans, and I'll show you what those roofs look like. They're, once they get a failure, they're very hard to repair, if not impossible, because of the kind of roof and that it is. And the settec, which has been our more recent theme, in addition to the heating, was, is over 50 years old and just showing signs of age. The pipes are very corroded within, we've just lined them at Sandborne, it's a cost of almost $20,000, counting to prevent any future floods. Any of the big equipment, aside from the boilers, showing signs of their age, original to the building, most of it, except the boilers, 50 years old or beyond. And we'll remind you again of the overcrowding, we have a photo in a minute of just, not only is it the mods, but it's also using every nook and cranny that we can. That's another discussion we're having as we reconfigure, is to take some of the bigger spaces and partition them into smaller spaces so that we have some more options for special education and conferences and things like that. So it's kind of an ongoing, what do we need now and how do we, how do we get there, based on what's available? So just some photos to go along with those, the updated kitchen ventilation, updated gym ventilation. A lot of it, Frank Schlegel were here, and we gave him the night off, but ongoing discussions of getting parts. Even getting to where some of these things are is almost impossible, or very challenging and becomes exponentially more expensive. Never mind the liability. The corroded heating pipe, we had the one radiator at Sandborne go a few weeks ago, and once you get that radiator cover off, you can just see what the condition of the pipes are, just even in that one little view we got that day. To then imagine a whole infrastructure of pipes of that condition is definitely concerning. And all the HVAC in both schools is outdated, so this ventilator actually is sitting where the vents are, they're in the upper part of that counter, and definitely not as efficient as it could be, and highly-dated infrastructure that repairing is very challenging.
I just found that the key is either on, really on, or not on.
Right, no balance to it.
That's a good point.
Yeah. Emergency lighting, meter building hasn't, any generator of any kind, so the power goes out, we are, we are without. Outdated control system, outdated grease traps. We get the theme. Corrosion again on the plumbing and heating lines. Asbestos-covered ductwork. The building does have considerable amounts of asbestos in the ductwork. Floor is, a number of other places, we monitor very carefully and comply completely with the regulations and have no health concerns. But, anything goes wrong and then you're into abatement because you have no choice, which is both costly and very intrusive and going to interrupt educational flow if we're big catering kids from classroom. This is the roof, this Sarnville. Boy, every district, and then I get to talk about this, because it, it almost always fails because it, it punctures and then you get a leak. It's not like a shingle roof where you're replacing it. So it's, and the fact that this is as old as it is, it's in great, great, great concern that it's just deteriorating, it's fragile, been to the elements a very long time. More equipment, this Sandborn freezer is actually outside. I can't explain the thinking on that, but it is. You go outside, the Sandborn walk-in cooler, you can see the condition there. And that wired clock system actually doesn't work anymore, so. Overcrowding, we just made a room at Sandborn for one of our lucky new hires. It was a custodian closet. That, that box is still sitting within the room and. We, apparently we tried to at least take the sign that says custodian closet off and put his name on it, but very challenging, not ideal. So the vision here, and this is the breadth of work the committee's gonna be doing, is, you know, what, what should middle schools in the next 50 years include? Some of the really basic things we know. We want our classrooms structured by teams. Middle school, middle school versus junior high is the team model. Our teams are spread out all over both schools. So the mode of really getting kids in an environment where they're close, proximate to the, the staff supporting them on a team across the content areas, that just doesn't exist for us, or in the physical sense. We know we want space for kids to collaborate and work together. We know we need space for project-based active learning. And we're gonna be really fleshing out what that means for the middle school and what we think the spaces look like. We have the gift here, you know, that high school's got a lot of those kinds of spaces to it. So I think we kinda know what we're talking about, but we wanna be sure we thought through what the middle school piece looks like. These are pictures of two, two middle schools. On the upper left is Duffsterry Middle School and their large team common area. So all the classrooms are peripheral to that. It's a horseshoe and one half is horseshoe is one team, the other half is the other. And both teams have these huge open spaces with soft furniture and tables to work at. And every month, they clear the tables out and they have a team meeting with all the kids and the staff together. That's what that picture's of. This below is Situance New Middle School that they opened. You can see their, their cafeteria space. They took a picture at Peabody this afternoon. I haven't had time to put our beautiful cafeteria at Peabody in just to check the pose, but I will. So you can start to see what we might hope for. And then, just a reminder, this was Feingold and.
Feingold Alexander.
Feingold Alexander's work, two years ago, that started to put a little bit of concept to what one school could look like. So that's, that's what this is here on the Sandborn property. Again, this is rough and not by any means what we're necessarily gonna do, but start to envision what it could look like. This is where the fields are now. This is where the school is now. One building. The curvature here's always intrigued me as to how they thought that was gonna come together with the gym and the auditorium. So that would be some of the work we hope to do if we get the, the funds to get the real schematic design figured out. So we wanna be sure we talk through the MSBA process because it's a really big part of how we are and where we are. So timeline eligibility, we've tried to be in that eligibility window. We've been denied twice. This would be what would happen if you were accepted in. So we're essentially proposing replicating this process simply without their oversight, which has got some positives to it that we'll talk about, but also without their subsidy. So you form the project team, which is really a professional team simultaneously with the building committee getting formed. So you're getting a project manager in place. They then run the feasibility study and the schematic design so that you do all that work as to what could, what could happen and what actually you're planning to build overseen by the project manager. The building committee also is formed so that that information's bouncing back and forth between the OPM and the project, the building committee for approval. All of it, all of it happens in a complimentary fashion. Funding is then the next stage, which would be at least a year out in terms of funding to actually build the school. So we are not looking for that this, this town meeting. We're looking for the 1.5 million to cover the OPM, the feasibility study and the schematic design. The hope would be that without MSBA, having to live to MSBA's oversight and their bureaucracy of you can only do certain things on their timeline because of how their board meetings are and such, you probably pick up some time from the five to six years that is there. Probably could pick up one to two years depending on how things are operating at MSBC, at MSBA and how the process is working.
So, sorry Lori, it's important to point out too that when you, first of all, the project team is the professionals that you hire. That's the first thing that happens if feasibility, if the article's approved. And likewise, the town would put together the building committee, who would then be helped by the project team to guide through the feasibility study and the schematic design. So when people ask, what, you know, the money goes to what, how does that work? That's an important clarification, I think, to make through that, that part of the, where we are in the process. And additionally, that we probably save a little time and some efficiencies because we can, you know, we're a little less locked in to their dates and stuff.
Yep, good point. So statement of interest, we've done some research as to applying to MSBA. So, 70 schools submitted in 2018, 12 are invited in. It's based on need and urgency and you're always up against the pool of applicants for that given year. And that's the message I hear every time I talk to them, is that we validated the need. We agree you need another, a new school. It's about who else was in the pool with our limited set of resources, so. Concord wasn't invited the year prior. We will resubmit this coming 2019. And then we go from there. But if you look at the condition of the schools in Massachusetts, you start to have pretty considerable doubt that if you haven't been in, in the first two years, we feel pretty strongly we're not likely to be invited in. Of the surveys they did in 2016, and this is where they actually physically went out to every school, 270 of the schools required moderate to extensive renovation. 131 of them are over 100 years old. 105 over capacity. And of those 105, 98 used temporary spaces, portable classrooms, things like that. So, we're not having our own unique needs here. It's, it's going to be a pattern where there's 70, 80, 100 applications. And unless the funding process changes, there's a limited, limited amount of projects for them to consider. So if you look at, let me just talk a little on the funding. They get a 1, 1% of the sales tax. So they estimate annually that is between $515 and $600 million. And they spread that as far as they can based on schools they deem appropriate. So unless those funds exponentially start to increase, they won't go, they won't go so far. So we tried to do some work on projecting cost growth because it definitely is more expensive to build now than it was. You know, Willard, for example, $30 million school. And we all look at each other as we're getting that fact and, you know, in 2019, that is not a $30 million building. So trying to get some data as to how costs have increased over the years. So the numbers you see here come right off of the actual projects that have been funded by MSBA. So they've either been supported, they're being built, or they have, were built. So when you just aggregate this chart of how the schools have landed, and these are average cost per square foot to equalize the metrics, you can see that clearly it's increasing. So if you do the math and divide it out, it's almost a 7% increase. As we went from the school funded in 2010 to the most recent funding in the 2016 phase.
And again, this is a slide you can get on the Mass Build In site. And all those dots, the filled-in ones are completed and the ones that are not filled in are approved but haven't, obviously, been built yet. Because it goes by date below. But it's showing how the cost has increased over all those years. So those are real schools, real projects, and someone can go to the site and actually research it themselves. If they're more curious, you know, as we're talking to people about those, those escal, the escalation of that cost.
If I can just speak on that too. So yeah, if you go to the site, if you go to the MSBA, you can just type in the construction cost growth and you can hover over each of those dots and it tells you exactly, you know, the project where it stands and finished, whatnot, and so.
Great. So then it's about what, how does that pertain to waiting to build? Because that's the question we're trying to be sure we present to everyone, is that why not just wait another year? Even if we think the, the risk is low, why not just wait in case, in case there's a possibility? When you start to use this kind of cost growth rate on a building of, say, and now we don't know this, but we gotta pick a number to do the math, so say $90 million, you're adding potential increases of $2 to $7 million a year because of the delay alone, just because things have gotten, get more expensive. That plus the $548,000 inefficiencies we've already identified adds on to the annual cost as well to the operating side. So you total that up and you start to see that there is a cost to wait, whether it's our annual out for three operating budget or potential cost increases to construction of $2.5 to $7.5 million depending on the cost of the project. So that seemed like important information to us and I frankly was hired than we thought going ahead.
How did you get your 2 to 7, what, how did you come up with that?
Yep. So what we use is, we use a 3% growth, growth baseline and a 7%. So if we did the 3% base, that's a $90 million high school, 3% would be about $2 million per year.
Per year.
If we went up to that, that 7%, it would be roughly $7, $7 million a year, including, and then you add on the redundancies of $548,000. One of the things that I also wanted to point out is, we did speak to a couple OPMs last week and they both, when we brought up, you know, the 6.93 number that MSBA had put on their website, they pointed out, that was 2016. It's, it's getting higher than that right now. So that 6.93 is out there from 2016, but they thought that that is, it's growth, it's more than that.
So if your range of 2.5 to 7.5 is using a 3% to 7% range, we're most likely talking at the high end of that at 7.
Could be, yeah.
At least 7 million because that's where the growth rate is. I think this one, as we're talking about, we just, we need to both understand and communicate out. I feel like this is really critical because I know, to me, even people have said in the past, and of course, the cost of building increases every year. And I always kinda dismiss that one, like, well, of course. I mean, there's inflation, the cost of milk goes up every year, the cost of paying teachers goes up every year. You know, there's a, there's a standard growth rate, everything's gonna go up, but we're gonna make more money, so we spend more money. So I've always kinda dismissed that until I looked at these numbers and realized that, I mean, almost 7%, that's significantly higher than the rate of growth of other things and certainly the rate of growth of the money that we have to work with. So it's not just the typical sure, you're gonna pay more over time. I mean, I think this is, this was eye-opening for me in the sense that it really does start to, to point to the fact that if you're gonna build this building, you wanna do it as soon as possible.
You know, just anecdotally, before Ian started researching, I was rattling off numbers based on builds that I've known in the last few years. And Ian came back with projects that were 20 million more. And we kept saying, what did they have? And the truth is, they didn't have a whole lot more. It was just that many years later at these kind of rates.
And MSBA is not, also, as you can see from that graph, they're not keeping up, not even close with the, even a 3% growth.
Right.
So I had a question, the 7%, almost 7%, over how many years?
Well, that, that could be right now. So 7%, every single year.
Year, each year.
Each year.
But has it been for 20 years this way or has it been for 10 years, five years?
So these are, this is 2010 to 16.
Yes, 16.
10 to 16. Yeah, yeah.
So, we've been trying to work with what the big picture debt is in the community, knowing that we're about to have potential impact to that. It's important that, that big picture be considered. So this graph shows the school building debt for the three elementary schools and the high school. And you can see, we've tried to label here, there's a point, the years are at the bottom and the total debt is up the side. There's places in the timeline where the three elementary schools are paid off. So Alcott is at FY '25, Thoreau at '26, and Willard at '29. So that becomes, that, that's substantially part of why the debt lowers. And then the high school dropped off at '39, FY '39. So we wanted to show that this is, we are not factoring in other town projects. We don't have that information and there's not approved projects that we can just apply or work with them on. So for now, it's, it's about the schools. Knowing the town has needs. And then school building debt with the middle school. We've tried to do a little comparison here to show, show what happens if you add the middle school project on. So the orange line shows the impact of a, say, a $90 million school at four and quarter interest, level payments, 25-year term. So you have to pick a way you fund it. And then you can apply that to the, the level of debt that we would have. We're gonna get another stage deep into this, but we wanna show the big picture.
Lori, this is probably a question for Jared. Why, why is the inflection point at the end of the Willard debt so much sharper than the inflections, which were practically unnoticed for Alcott and Thoreau?
That's a good question. I'll, off the top of my head, I don't know. I think just the, probably the project cost of the Willard was more than Alcott and Thoreau. But I, I'm not, I think it's just the way that it.
With no MSBA subsidy, so perhaps the combination of factors?
Yeah.
So then, a couple other points we wanna start now to put numbers to. Peabody, we have no plans on the school side for Peabody. So that would be an expected return to the town of an asset that, as of today, is valued at $11,900, almost $12 million. We've been running the math on the debt load of 90 million over 25 years and looking at what that would mean to the median property tax bill. So we're estimating that at $809 per year over the 25 years. And there's, we can show you some comparisons of how it plays out with MSBA, without MSBA, a year from now, two years from now, a little bit later on. But we wanted to show that, given the 90 million, that's what it would look like over 25 years. So, there are benefits without MSBA's funding. You're not gonna haggle over the design of the school. We know the high school had a lot of, lot of navigating with MSBA to get what you needed to meet the needs of the community. That's a very common story. Jared and I have both lived that in other districts. They have a formula and the funding is to the formula. And if you want beyond that, either you pay for it or you compromise the structure of what you're trying to build, or both. So, we expect you to accelerate the timeline between a year and two years depending on, on how MSBA would have played out versus how efficient we can be. Potential savings, which is cumulative to the other slides that we've talked on, 5 to 15 million through the elimination of two years of construction. So the longer it takes you to build, the more expensive it gets. So that's meant to adapt to that. Savings can be significantly higher. Savings estimate assumes that Concord gets in in 2019. So there's a challenge there to figure out how it plays out if we get in in 2019. You can start to see that going without now, you might save more money than you would have been subsidized, if you can follow that. Because we expect subsidy at about 25% given the demographic. And knowing it gets more expensive as we wait, it could be a savings to do. it gets more expensive as we wait, it could be a savings to do without.
So go ahead.
Go ahead, I was just going to clarify, I think the same thing, the twenty-five percent is their funding percentage on what is considered eligible, right? So just to clarify that, I think, given what Concord would want in a middle school, we would not necessarily get twenty-five percent funding of the whole cost of our school. If we keep in mind that MSB does not support an auditorium at all, they only support a smaller gym than we have at Sandmore and even, there's a good chance that we would want, even if we were working with MSBA, we would engineer our school to be more than what would be eligible for reimbursement and therefore our overall reimbursement is going to be less than that twenty-five percent.
Right, correct.
So just want to, we need to be clear about that.
I recall I've read about some projects where the percentage was over twenty-five percent.
It's all based on the demographics and wealth factor of the community.
Okay, so a New Bedford or Fall River or something like a, would.
Might get a higher percentage.
Automatically be subject to, yeah, no, I've heard so much.
Lori, I have a question on the prior slide.
Sure.
I don't really, I'm not sure I understand the import of this slide. What is that telling us?
We've been asked regularly how much it would be to individual taxpayers in town, so we want to be sure we've got some of that data and we also think it's important to make sure we stated that PBD is an asset to be returned.
How, okay, how would the taxpayer realize that benefit?
In terms of?
How, how would, are you, are you saying that eight hundred and nine dollars per year for the average taxpayer would show up on their tax bill?
It would be the increase.
No, no, that would be the increase to support the debt service. It's not connected to the, to PBD as an asset. Those are different things.
The twelve million is an independent number.
Yeah, I think it needs to be clarified, but that's a good point. Those two are not, eleven million is not related to the eight oh nine. Eleven million is purely, we would, I would assume, vote to, we'd have to vote it, but we would surplus the PBD building back to the town, therefore the town has an eleven million dollar asset that the town can decide what to do with, you know, there are, you know, affordable housing needs, office needs, whatever it may be. Separate from that, people ask us, what is going to be the cost per household of a new middle school? And so we've looked at it and said, well, you know, there are a lot of ifs here, but if it's a ninety million dollar building and if you are at the median household value, then your cost would be about eight oh nine for you.
We'll format that so it's clear.
Erin, are you clear who's asking the questions for the minutes?
The impact of waiting. And again, we're going to talk you through a little bit of some of how the things play out if we wait. So the eight oh nine you just saw would be based on ninety million without MSBA. Okay? If we had been invited in this year, expecting twenty-five percent of the reimbursable portion of the project, that bill would lower to seven ninety to seven twenty-four per median household.
Six ninety.
Six ninety, six ninety to seven twenty, I mixed all the numbers together, six ninety to seven twenty-four. If we wait and we're invited in, in twenty, I'm sorry, we're invited in in twenty nineteen, then it lowers to six ninety, seven twenty-four. We're not considering MSBA on a fiscal year because they're really the calendar year program, so that would be if we got invited in this year, instead of the eight oh nine, it would drop. Similar numbers would have happened if we'd been invited in FY eighteen, or in two thousand and eighteen. If we're invited in in twenty twenty and the subsidy is put onto the project, then the bill is at about seven thirty-five to seven eighty-nine per household. However, we delayed everything at that point, so costs are going to have gone up, so it could be that doesn't completely hold because the building will have gotten more expensive. The following year, if we were to push out that much farther with subsidy, seven eighty-two to eight fifty-eight. So by then, of course, we're another number of years out of school and all the educational needs are still suffering greatly, along with all the risk factors of what we haven't addressed with failing infrastructure that we can't predict when or if that might need to happen. So that all said, plus the redundancies, you start to see the increases of what it could look like MSBA supported if we were to take that risk, there seems to be some negating of those, the longer we, the longer we push it out hoping for subsidy, other things start to play in, that minimizes the fiscal benefit to every, every house.
Well, it doesn't even touch the possibility of hundreds of thousands of dollars of repair or moves or things that might happen.
So one of our thoughts was to put potential costs next to that list of infrastructure needs so that it's very clear, the big numbers we're talking about for some of those systems.
I think, can I also, and I want to get to the big picture because I definitely have some thoughts on that, but even on this one here, and I didn't even catch this reading it earlier, but when we say if we are invited in in two thousand and nineteen, the property tax bill is lowered to six ninety to seven twenty-four, that does not take into account, we've probably pushed, although you say here, building will begin up to two years later, but the median cost here has not taken into account those two years. So I think really, really, if we're going to use those numbers, we would have to escalate those costs a bit. To say if, if we were invited in in two thousand and nineteen, median cost would be six ninety to seven twenty-four, it really isn't quite fair, accurate, you'd have to escalate it a little.
Yeah, how many variables you play with.
If the overall, right, if the overall number goes up, right, exactly, yeah. Pulling a lot of variables in and then really you could play that through all of these because basically the further out it goes, the more expensive the building gets, as we were talking about. So anyway, that's just one thing we might want to.
I think we should point it out, but I think the fact that the estimated cost doesn't escalate in these figures gives you an apples to apples comparison of year to year burden.
I think, I mean, we did put some numbers, right? So there, I guess I misspoke, we can't pinpoint exactly what those escalated costs are. You can see there's a note at the bottom, five to seven percent.
Okay, 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 so that does assume it.
And that's probably my fault for how I said it.
Okay, no problem, that's okay. So can I first just say huge kudos to Jared and Ian for putting all this together and all the work that you've done too, I mean, this has been a lot of work putting all this together. And just as I said about Joanna painting the picture for, about the parking history, this is a great painted picture of the scenario here, so thank you guys, it's huge, this is what we were looking for. And I have a couple of thoughts now that I'll start to share on, you know, before we present it, but, but this is terrific, so thank you. And then I'll just dive right in with my thoughts, which is really looking at the last slide again because I think this is huge right here. You start to look at these numbers and even just looking at these numbers, I start to think, oh my gosh, fiscally, you know, it's, it's almost a matter of being fiscally responsible. It's almost necessary to start to move forward quickly, almost, right, according to these numbers, but then you go back and you look at the numbers that you were referencing a few slides ago in terms of the five to fifteen million and you lay that on, you layer that on top of it and then you look at the items that are on our at-risk list, which is if the roof goes, if something else goes, what we might have to replace, and you lay those all on top of each other and the potential costs over the next couple of years, if we don't start moving right away are significant, potentially higher than what we would be reimbursed from the MSBA if we were even to get in in the next year or two. So that's what I think I would love to see even more, I know, I'm always asking for more, but I would love to see those layered a little bit more even, basically the savings that were referenced earlier on top of this, so that we can really look at that picture of end of day, what are our potential costs and risks if we move now and if we don't? And I think we're almost there, it's just a matter of marrying a couple of numbers here. Does that make sense what I was just saying, Jared?
You know, the thing that I always struggle with with the infrastructure, and I know I've said this a couple of times last week at the meetings, none of this is going to happen until it has to because there's no fiscally responsible person, at least this fiscally responsible person, can't recommend that we save the cost of what it is to fix these. It'll be in a crisis emergency kind of mode that we hope we can contain it for twenty thousand like we did the subject, not knowing when, what amount of options. So that's, capturing that in quantitatively is what I wasn't sure how to do.
Right, it's hard to do. And I think it is something, like we were talking about going, we've had some initial discussions with Finegold Alexander again to refine their numbers and maybe some of it we can even do ourselves, but I think looking back at their list of what would have to be done, like you said, a lot of it, we're certainly not going to do unless we absolutely have to and some of the things on their list we're never going to do, you know, one of them was add an auditorium to PBD. Well, we're just not going to do that, right? So we're going to take off the things that we wouldn't even consider, but I think we do want to look at that list and narrow it down to the, you know, here are the things that won't need to happen and here are the things that could need to happen if they fail, right? And then we're in the case of scrambling and who knows if we have to find places to put students in the meantime and all of that and we might not be doing it in the most cost effective way because we're doing it as a last term solution, but I think we do need to refine that list and look at what's our risk over the next couple of years? What could we potentially end up having to spend if various things fail? And that's not to throw back at you because I haven't done that yet with Finegold, but if we can refine that list and then have that in here, I think that.
We did sort of it this afternoon and the lists overall match in terms of the must do's, they've got some things there that I don't think we're ever going to splinter both schools and something like that. So now it's just putting costs to it.
Yeah, okay. But this is, I mean, that's, I'm, you know, throwing some details here to add, but, let's see, I had a couple of other thoughts as we went through, just in terms of things, one of my overall, and this is somewhat just my own self notes, somewhat to all of us who are going to be presenting this, one is that I think it might be helpful as noticing as you're adding commentary to a lot of these, right, that we will need to put down a lot of that commentary on, you know, side notes for all of us, so that as we present this, we can give some of that color commentary to some of these slides where it's not all printed on there. So that was one of, sorry, one of my thoughts that I think we'll need that. Things like, and a bunch of these came up as I was thinking about it, but you know, when you're talking about the mods, the fact that students have to go in and out of the building all the time to go into them, you know, the duplication, when you were talking about duplication, I feel like there's some things that can't necessarily be measured monetarily, but Justin Cameron, the principal, must spend, what, an hour a day driving back and forth, how many hours is that, you know, a hundred and eighty hours over the course of school year, you know, there, there are other things that, that we lose in this scenario that aren't necessarily of a monetary cost. So I don't know, these are all just things that I don't want us to lose track of, they don't necessarily need to be a slide, but maybe they can go into, you know, our side notes and we can all keep them, keep them in mind. I think those were the, pretty much the notes that I made as we went through.
Well, we have been calling it a middle school for how many decades when we all knew it wasn't a traditional middle school, it was two buildings. I think it bears pointing out that we are watching the buildings more carefully than ever before because we don't have early warning systems the way we'd like, but we're doing what we can, including weekend checks that have been re-instituted in some cases, am I right?
Yes, we caught a heat issue yesterday.
Be surprised if we didn't have.
Yeah, no, we caught it, so it was a, totally fixable, but if we hadn't been checking the building over the weekend, we would have come into it this morning and had an unheated PBD. Grateful for the time and saving the check, yeah.
We're doing building checks standard, you know, probably for the rest of the year, continuous.
We have to show out. Well, pro act.
Lori, could you or someone else shed some light on the MSBA procedure? If we keep asking for a subsidy, is there a queue or are we eventually going to get to the front of the queue or there's just no guarantee?
No guarantees at all.
It's really going to be what the competition is, whether we are judged to be of lesser need than others who are getting the queue.
The other piece I'm starting to say out loud, there was a tumultuous history with MSBA during the high school project, they would never say that has impact. One has to wonder if you get a rough road with a community, if that factors in. Their answer is by far, it's competitive against the other districts that are applying, there's no guarantee, keep applying, you might make it to the top of the queue. So there's a lot of variables at play here at this point, but it is not a guarantee that re-application ever gets you.
Also, and I don't know if anybody else has heard this, so I don't want to say this officially or suggest this in our presentation yet, but I have heard that several districts who don't have the wealth factors that we do in Concord have actually gone to the MSBA board and pushed back on them funding towns like Concord, actually saying that, you know, this isn't what the MSBA is for, you should be funding towns that can't afford schools. I don't know, I think, I don't know what that means in terms of their thinking, I've heard that there's some of that feedback going back to them out there. It's just all those little things that, who knows?
Tom, I did a little bit of research, actually a couple of, three months ago, and I came across an article from some Western Mass town and they had this very nice old school building, they applied eleven years in a row and were rejected, eleven years.
Wow.
Which I didn't think that'd be possible.
Oh, absolutely.
So you don't get a favorite status after five, ten years?
Apparently not, eleven, oh my god. That's painful.
So in terms of moving forward with this and our approach and all this work that's been done, I'm wondering if we want to give ourselves, you guys tell me, but till our next CPS meeting with twelve, to, to be ready to go out, just because partly been mired in it, like so much work maybe, I don't know, is this, is this what we feel we want to do, do you want to do a summary of this and have this as backup, like where, where do we want to go to go forward? I think we've got everything like really well done, maybe we'll do some tweaking on this estimating and talk about that some more, but it's like we've all been mired in it now for a little while and I don't want to do it poorly, I want, when we go out, I want to execute well. I'm, I'm thinking of February being our start time, but do we want to give ourselves, maybe we just start with the tours in February and our first coffee date after the twelve and be sure we all feel ready, or you tell me?
I think we can start the tours, the tours are what they are, the buildings speak for themselves to anybody who wants to view them and they generate questions, some of which we can anticipate and some of which perhaps we can't, but it would be a good thing if we're directed toward any more sensible research that we haven't anticipated. I don't know if Finegold Alexander's findings as well as you do, is there anything there that we need to bring forward into this presentation in the way of anticipated future costs regarding delay, because that was one of their central pieces.
Yeah, I, I think we might get some more information from them, we keep kind of looking back at our information and adjusting our own version of what do we want to ask for from them, but I don't feel like we need to wait for information from them in order to go out. We might end up, you know, updating some numbers or something or a graphic as we go out, but I don't feel like we need to wait for that in order to.
So, so we have, according to my master schedule, which is whatever it is, is a February sixth date of a, of a coffee or information session and then not another one until February fourteenth. You come with your Valentine and you can learn about the town school. So I just wondering, do we want to do that one or do we want to sort of sit on this and then revisit how we portray those numbers or do we want to, I just want to sort of give everybody a little bit marching orders, take a break, do a little of the parking, come back? How to approach it, I mean, I feel like we've done incredible amount of work, this is, now we can articulate.
So the sixth, just looking at the calendar, the sixth. So the 6, just looking at the calendar, the 6 is two weeks and a day from now. The 14th is another week in it. And then...
I'm happy to keep it there. We can...
Put that in perspective or just to put it out there. Do we need more time than two weeks to start?
No, probably not. I'm saying if you only work on this for two weeks, I feel like you don't, until you've worked on for the last two weeks.
Right, I know.
So I'm just, I'm just trying to give everybody...
Maybe the question is more for you guys because...
We're, the hard stuff's over for us. So whenever you're comfortable, we're ready.
Okay.
I think the sooner we open this up, the sooner that dialogue informs us about how to do it well.
Yeah.
The community's gonna inform us. The community's gonna inform the community.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I agree with you. I just wanna be sure we feel like, okay, one, everybody feels comfortable. If they were sitting by themselves with this, they have all their questions answered. They understand all these slides of us, not you guys.
Right.
Two, is this the way, the format and everything, we wanna proceed with 25 slides? Do you want some work done to just bullet the highlights with this information by your side?
Right.
I just, I just wanna be prepared. This is it. It's a very good question.
So tackle my question about Feingold Alexander. Are there some important figures in there that we should share in this presentation? About projected risks for delay?
We were looking at it this afternoon. There are no additional huge risks in that report that we haven't named. What we have done is put costs on. The major ones were HVAC, the roof, the septic. They were all there. So we went all through. There are a lot of ancillary things that aren't gonna hit that level of emergency mode at any point.
And if somebody wanted to look at that document, it's publicly available.
It's online from...
You can find, sure.
Yes, it's on the agenda from a couple of years ago.
Yeah, I won't say easy to find yet.
Yeah, we gotta find it.
Somewhere if they fail, that we don't wanna do. We just name four, five of them, right? So I guess here's a way, I'll be more direct. Do you want someone like me and Lori and Jared and Heather, whoever, to do a version of this that is a more summarized version? Do you wanna go out with this? Candidly, I'll say, I love all this stuff. I like to get every bit of this information. Some of these slides are packed with words. And they're, they're just, are they gonna take away? Are people gonna stay with us? So that's really, it's all massive in the presentation of this information.
Yeah, I think that's a good question. And in some of our presentations of this, keep in mind, it's not all our coffees where we run the show. Some of this might be, we've reached out to a group, they're inviting us to their meeting. We're given 10 minutes to talk.
Well, that's an even different situation. But the most common, and, you know, in terms of numbers, we're gonna have more coffees than anything else, right? So I think we should gear it towards maybe 15-minute kind of slideshow, less than this, and then have Q and A afterwards.
And have some of this information ready.
If we get an hour, hour and 15 minutes out of all these people coming to coffee, I think that's about all we can expect, I would think.
Yeah.
I'm not sure about 15 minutes or another length of time. But I would echo what you said, Joanne. I think everything here is important information that people will wanna have in one form or another. If we abbreviate the presentation, I think we need a handout. And I think we need to design some questions. So we get the kind of inquiry we want, the kind of opinion gathering.
So let me ask it a different way. Maybe what we do is we go out as is, you know, with a couple of those big ticket items on there, whatever, and see how it goes. And then revisit it at our meeting and say, I think we need a shorter version.
Yeah, that could be a good idea. Using that 6, keeping the 6 on here.
I mean, provided someone comes.
Right, right.
Sabotage.
Well, and I don't think we have to apologize for any refinements we do. I think that's great.
No, we'll refine it as we go, which makes sense, yeah. We can use that as our first run and discuss it more.
Because also, by the 6, you will have done some of this visioning, right? With, that happens at the end of the month?
Yes.
We start at the end of the month.
I don't know if that informs it any better. You said there was some...
It'll start to.
Yeah.
All right. So let's do this. Let's, I'll be in charge, put you at the schedule. And we just have to be able to all have access to this. Once you do those couple of things, I guess, right?
Right.
All right.
I think that makes sense. And then in terms of kind of notes for presenters, you know, do we...
We can, I'll go through and add some stuff.
Okay.
We put a PowerPoint, the notes are right there.
That's true. We can put the notes right there, okay. And that's the kind of stuff that I think we'll definitely end up adding to, especially after our first few, and we see what the questions are. What needs we just, if that makes sense to me.
All right. Let's break.
Can I just clarify Mr. Tapi's question, actually? So I have the reason for that, that the big drop was the last year of the Willard. It actually, it dropped in half, is the way it's designed.
It actually...
It drops in half. So that's why it's going down so much that last year. The principal payment drops in half.
Are you taking any comments to the floor?
Oh, sure, yes, of course. Just we state your name and address with the minutes.
Yes, I'm the observer and our observer. I'm not sure if, you know, I know you're, you're gonna be presenting these to lots of different people around town. The asset of PBD could very well be of big interest to some groups, especially to maybe their portfolio housing. We think it's something, I know it's not like your big focus is really about middle school, but it might be really a selling point, you know, that people aren't even thinking about. That a $10 million property could be available for any kinds of, all kinds of community assets.
That slide needs to be...
Putting a little more, right, a little more info behind it. That's good. Thank you.
Thinking along the chariots or...
Right, yeah. Yeah. Throwing out some ideas of what it could be.
The other thing I wanna point out too is it's maybe in the notes that it's also an opportunity to build community space that others can use. A regular, you know, sized gym.
Yes, a gym that community can use.
An auditorium that the community can, you know, just also advocate for this opportunity for the community to use.
This can be a community resource. Yeah. I think you're right. Like somewhere in the middle.
Any others while we're at it?
Yeah.
I guess the only point I would make is I...
Can you just state your name for the minutes?
Tom, we're getting the select board. I would stay away from the, I don't know where the $90 million figure came from. But once you're focused on that, I thought that was kind of the whole point of the study was to see what the cost would be and how you could evaluate. Once you kind of put the $90 million on the table, I think it becomes kind of scary. And you're not necessarily going forward with a $2 million study. You're going forward with a $90 million school. And I'm not sure whether people are ready for that yet. That's, I think that's what the study is gonna help you come to.
Right.
The problem came, or that when you wanna try and come up with some cost for people to understand in their tax implication. Or for example, the finance committee, this is when it first happened, was, well, how do you project escalated cost if you use 3% or 7% or whatever? You gotta have enough, you gotta work from some number. So I don't know what the answer is. That's sort of how that evolved.
We agree with you. We didn't wanna put a number up there.
Because I agree, you anchor right there. And then it can become something, you know, that everyone assumes you know. And...
And I think it's tricky to put numbers on, you know, almost anything. And if you get into a recession in two years, building costs may not be escalating as much. If we end up, you know, going away from tariffs, you know, the price of steel may be coming down. There's an awful lot of factors that are beyond people's control. And I think once you kind of, you know, start locking yourself in the numbers that may be hard to justify, you lose a little bit of credibility. So I think the idea of having a range makes some sense. But I would be, again, I'm a little bit cautious about, you know, all the numbers that you're using. I think the concept that it's gonna be more expensive in the future if you do nothing is a concept that you can be persuasive with without having to try to calculate all the numbers and display them. Because I think that then you're getting into a little skepticism on some people.
I absolutely agree with you. I'm trying to figure out a way to answer those questions without anchoring on some number.
I would just have the platform question. The $800 tax increase, that's just for this building?
Correct. Per year.
Per year.
Yes.
So our taxes are gonna go up a lot more than that every year because of the increase in anything else. Our taxes are always going up every year. So it's a little misleading to say your taxes are just gonna go up $800 a year.
Well, as a result of this building.
As a building project.
Right. So I'll have to clarify that...
At least 2 or 3% every year.
Right. I have to clarify that 800 would be the result of this building project, not your total tax change.
So you're thinking, oh, $800, it's been going up that way, so...
Oh, right.
I think it's important to clarify.
Yeah, to clarify.
As soon as, because we present the budget, we're talking about 2 or 3% increase in tax. This is on top of that.
Right.
But again, it's also now based on what Tom says. You know, you probably wanna have a range of what it might be. It's hard, because people, at the end of the day, they wanna know what's gonna be the cost to me? You know, where will I see that? And we don't know a lot. We know roughly.
But, yeah. Now, these are good points though. Thank you. I mean, it's helpful to hear that feedback as we figure out how we formulate all this.
Yes.
Nelson, 52, Patad Lane. I think that this is really interesting. And you've got a lot of numbers here. You also have a very persuasive story with the shape the buildings in, the age of the building, the potential cost, which are probably easier to quantify than the potential escalation of building cost over time. So I guess, being just an average citizen, if I'm at a coffee, I think I can be persuaded by a lot of things. I think I might take in my skepticism with things that are a little more iffy.
The iffy being the escalation factors?
Yeah, and there's just a lot of numbers in there. And, you know, I'm really curious what the two members from the finance committee who are sitting here, what are they feeling skeptical about as they listen to this? Because I think that could really help inform you as the kind of information you wanna make sure the citizens get.
That's true. I wonder if they'd be willing to share that.
I'll offer one comment. The concept of putting a number towards the surplus asset, I think is not particularly constructive.
Has the $11 million value of the building?
You're gonna spend 80% of your presentation telling us how terrible it is, how you can't maintain, how it might break down tomorrow, how you have to abate the asbestos and all the costs that will be involved. And then you're gonna tell the town that you're getting an $11 million asset. It is going to be a cross sync for the town to accept. There's no way that that building is gonna be a benefit to the town. We're gonna have to spend money to do, to repurpose it or tear it down. But that's all there is to it. So to say you're getting something that's worth $11 million is not, I don't think...
That's a good point, a very potential distraction.
Yeah, and you, you know, oh, this great thing. And no, no, the town will, in accepting it, the town will take on something that has to either be maintained or torn down. And that's very costly.
Although, would give the town opportunity for a place of need, you know, I mean, the needs assessment hasn't been done, the other study is being done. But it would, I agree with you about the number. But in some aspects, the asset of being able to have that place to work with, whether it's for, you know, whatever need.
Sure. I think to say, here's the value of a lot, would probably be about as far as I would...
I felt that the information from Feingold and Alexander about how much it's gonna cost us to maintain those buildings was so powerful. I'm not sure, was it included in this slide presentation?
Oh.
You know, over five years, in wait for five years, and it'll cost the town X amount.
Right, exactly. And those are... So those are the lists that we were just referencing that as we looked back through them in more detail, they were about, okay, if we're gonna keep these buildings for 10 years.
I know they included a lot of things that weren't necessary.
Right. But you, I think the point is their list with numbers does tell a strong story. So, which comes back to all the items that Lori referenced, the HVAC, the roof, all those kind of things are up here as risks. But I think if we put the numbers with those, then we, right, then we start to... Yeah, then we start to tell what we may have to put into these buildings over the next few years if things go wrong.
Just to keep them running.
Just to keep them going, yeah.
That was powerful.
Okay, that's good, thank you.
All right, we have a few more things to get through. So it seems like we have a little bit more work we can do collectively on some of these.
Yeah.
All right. So new business, oh, quickly, ALLOC principal search, that's gonna begin. And Lori came to me as chair about having a school committee member on it. I said I'd be happy to sit on the search committee unless someone's dying to. It's just about to begin in the next few weeks. And numbers guy, who tells us about FY '20 CPS budget? Oh, no, this is just a revisit. Are we having anything changed? We're still...
We're $145,024.
From the GIMA. And I'd just like to have that there to be sure if there's anything, if anything has changed.
Other than sitting this morning and calculating needs that come up since we budgeted and trying to figure out how we're gonna make that all come together, no.
So what's the timeline on the principal search?
Uh, yep.
Do you know it? I'll tap you here, I had it.
I mostly do. The search committee will start to meet the first week in February. Resume, the position's posted. So we have resumes actively coming in right now. The committee will screen resumes and invite in eight candidates or so after the break in February. And then from there, there'll be a round of interviews. And then, once you're down to the finalists, the log gets turned over to me in the process we're gonna use to vet the finalists and bring them in for forums and all of that. So we're hoping by the end of March.
Thank you, that was a good question. All right. Action items, everyone ready?
Yes, okay. I would move that the Concord School Committee vote to accept the CPS enrichment fund donation in the amount of $50.
Second?
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Thanks.
Then we have one more.
Hold on, can you answer that one? And I would move that the Concord School Committee vote to accept the Reed's Ferry Storage Shed for the Thorough School in the amount of $2,999.65.
Second? My question is Reed's Ferry, the donor, is that verification?
No, that's the brand of the shed, the donor, PTG or something.
Okay. So with thanks to both donors.
That's great.
Yeah.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The entertaining Washington to adjourn?